Is this college?
College, yeah.
College visits?
Yeah, and you can't pick the dates really. Like, college, you're like, yours are one time, you know?
Better go.
Right. Yeah, so we're going to Charleston. She must have looked at college or, I'd guess, college or Charleston.
Is that a small city?
I think so. There's a, there's a few Amherst kids there. So I don't know what the link is, you know, but she knows some kids that are down there, so.
Okay.
I was like, okay. I like it a little bit better than, like, Florida.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Is she hoping to dive?
We would like her to. I'm not sure.
If she wants to do it enough?
Yeah. Charleston doesn't have diving. There's a couple on her, like, she has like seventeen, eighteen schools on her list, and there's a couple that don't have diving. Um, so, I just wanted to have a look.
Yes.
Talking to her, actually, very quickly. What's she doing? Thursday's trip is an official, like, sports visit.
Oh, okay.
She gives us a bit of a call to, so I'm hopeful that it works.
That'll connect somehow with her.
Yeah, which I'm hoping, right. Now with the scanner, college and all, so.
Yeah.
It's a division.
Oh. It's interesting how some of those small or the large schools are, have different.
Yeah, most of them are Division III, they don't have a smart.
My summer at the zoo, then, we played Division III, possibly, but we didn't have Division I.
Oh, that's crazy. I didn't mind if they had cross sports, divi- like, within the school.
Yeah.
To move, I think, a little bit. Trying to get around.
at six thirty five.
And seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call the Amherst School Committee to order at six thirty five.
Excellent. Okay, so first off, we have comment comment. I did not receive any, um, print or voicemails. Is there anyone in line? Okay. So, the first thing we have is a presentation of the new bullying reporting platform. Dr. Z.
Good evening, everyone. It's really, um, I would say, a great, great time in the Amherst Pelham and Amherst Pelham Regional School Districts. As Jerry sets up, at first, I would like to extend apologies on behalf of the Director of Mental Health and Behavioral Services, Maureen Fleming. She was unable to be here this evening, but she takes the lead in terms of bullying, Title IX harassment cases, working with our counselors and our deans. And since, um, this summer, one of the first critical things that a district has worked on, I have to also thank Director Champagne, Jerry Champagne, who's gonna take the lead in a walk through this evening, because he was very specific. It's not just about a program, but what are we looking for? What are we looking for as a district, as, or districts, as well as what are we looking for for our end users? When I did my walkthrough, when I did my interview in person, the students talked about the fact, like, we don't know where things go. It's not an easy platform to use. When we came in, the team had already started, and Jerry asked a simple question, what are we looking for? We had a list of acts, but critically, we wanted something that was end-user friendly, but also, um, as a district team to support, we could monitor. And I would like to let you know that it's really, really, this new platform, BRIM, that he's gonna walk through on both ends, um, not just for the end user, but for us as district personnel, provides a clear support in our process. So I hand it over to Jerry.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, show this. So, you know, we had a system in place before. It was a, a system developed by, uh, someone down in New Jersey that Faye Brady had worked with previously. Um, the system was fine, as far as it went. Basically, somebody would put in a report, and hopefully, people would follow up. It's hopefully a piece that, uh, really, one of the big failings is that we kinda had to count on people to step up and do their job and, and follow through on, on the bullying reports. Uh, the other piece, uh, was that, uh, reports could be deleted, which I thought was a great weakness. Okay, so when we started looking for a new platform, uh, that was, those were two of the criteria that we were looking at to make sure that the platform would have some, um, measure of, uh, not just notifying people when it went in, but notifying people if something wasn't done in a timely manner. Also, that, uh, reports couldn't be deleted. Um, so I looked around for different software in New Jersey. One of the software that handles reporting, okay? Not a lot that would handle the, the kind of follow-up piece that would require somebody to step up within a specific amount of time.
Point of order?
Point of order, please. Is there a problem with the mic?
Yeah.
Can you give it? Derek, did you take this one?
Thank you.
They plug stuff in, it works better, right? Okay. So, um, so anyway, so, those were some of the criteria we used. Um, when, so when looking at things, really, the one I, I found that fit all, all of our criteria was a piece of software called BRIM. Uh, I think it's bullying, was, reporting, and intervention syst- uh, mo- uh, something like that. So, I'm gonna kinda get right into it. Uh, you can see on this screen also, to your, your right, my left. So on the main district page, you can see right at the top, there's a link for reporting bullying and harassment, and that takes, uh, the user to a page that is school-specific. So each school has their specific link that links to them. Also, if we go to any specific school site, uh, let's say, the high school, for example, you can see, we have the, the same general one, but also in the upper right, we have the link directly to their reporting system. Okay, but I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna pick on Summit Academy. Sounds mean, but the reason I'm picking on Summit Academy is they haven't had any reports yet, so I didn't wanna expose any of our, our data out to the public. So, the user would come in, click on the link, and this is what the end user sees. It's a very basic page, not a lot of information required right here on this first page. So, I wanna make this clear, and pardon my typing, I can't type for, to save my life, so. This is quite apparent. Select a location. So, we wanna know where this occurred, and this is important as we gather data. So as more and more reports come in, we're gonna be able to draw correlations to certain areas that maybe, um, need more attention, for example. So let's say, the lunch area. Date of incident, we'll just pick today, and you are, let's say, um, I'm a parent and guardian, and of course, the comment, I'm not a robot. So, report, and success, doesn't seem like we have much information there, and we don't. But this is where we start getting into the page, where we start asking for more details. Okay? So, if the person wants to report who they are, that's where they would do that, here. The zoom height, would you like to be contacted, yes or no? Let's say, no. They can upload an image or a video, if there's, there's such a thing. We know in this day and age, people have their phones out all the time, recording everything that occurred. So, how long has this been going on? This is an important detail that can help determine whether this is bullying or not, what type of behavior. We've customized a lo- this quite a bit, so there are some things in here that might not be in the generic BRIM. Adding words like harassment, and different, transphobic, I think, was not, um, in there initially, so we've added some different things. Um, if you know the names, this is also important as we kinda gather data, and we start drawing more correlations to things, or repeat offenders. So the more data we have, the better we are able to, you know, follow up, so. Any witnesses? Select the time, again, important, it kinda draws some, I said the lunchroom, so maybe I'll pick lunchtime. There, so that's it. That's, that's a report filed, and now I already have.
Jerry, can I add in something?
Yeah.
So I want, um, Sarah Best, if you, since you're next to me, can you look right here and see, and read out what you're seeing?
Support to bullying incident reported at Summit Academy, instantaneously.
In six forty-two PM.
Right, so there's a, a list of people for each school that are notified every time a report is filed. Gotta write the first time. So, now, um, in the, in the case of Summit, it would be David Slovan. He would go in then and follow up on this, and you can see, this is his dashboard, see one I did earlier today, and I was playing around with it, and it's canceled, okay? I canceled it, you cannot delete it. So that's an important feature for this. So now, so what they'll see, that it's open. Now, if nobody took action for ten days, which I think is the state, um, standard, they would receive another email, they would be done to follow up on this, okay? And it's gonna keep repeating and sending them messages until something is done. Um, and that's where, I think, some of the failures of the old system occurred, is that a report would go in and people wouldn't follow up, or maybe they assumed somebody else followed up. And, so things slipped through the cracks, so we're trying to avoid that now. So, now we see we have an open incident, so we click on the incident, and I'm not gonna fill all of this out, because there's a lot of things to do here. So this is the basic report, and you can see the initial comments that people can make. So as they investigate, there are places to enter additional data as it's, the realm, intervention. So if they decide there's an intervention needed, so if we say, add an intervention, these are some of our, the interventions that we created, and they can add further detail as needed, including start dates, which is, again, we need, and when, when we're due and when we're completed. So we're following up with more detail on all of this. Status of this intervention, is it in progress, is it completed, did we cancel it for whatever reason? And you can see, there's a, an escalating series of steps here, you know, where we're just talking to the student, talking to the student's caregiver, talking to staff. I'm not gonna say this every time. So, and so you can see, as they escalate to different levels. Um, sorry, where did I go? Nope, kinda wanna get rid of that. So I'm gonna cancel that. Um, and again, the final investigation, internal comments, add an investigation result. This is, again, where we have additional detail, the status of this part of the investigation, reviews or comments, whether actions were taken or not. I know this is very dry, sorry. External communications, again, who are we contacting? Is it this, the, you know, the caregivers, is it the students? Some other information. Now, are we adding staff to do additional work on this, be it the interventions, um, additional investigation, or what have you? There's also places, and we haven't seen it right in, in what I've been showing you here, where we can add the names of students involved, okay? Again, as we build data, again, we're not trying to call anybody out or single people out, but it's important to build kind of a, a database of repeat offenders, so we can de- uh, you know, determine trends, and if students need additional intervention. And, and files, if there's any files needed, if there's, um, screen grabs, for example, um, you know, if the bullying occurred via text message, the student can provide screen grabs of the text messages, or items of that nature. Um, that's really it, and then when it's closed, it would respond, resolve, incident status is closed, or closed unfounded, that's another one, which is important. Some of these, as we've seen already, are not technically classified as bullying, okay? So they would be unfounded, but they might require another type of intervention, or, or, you know, attention by the staff to, to the event in progress. Um, again, plenty of comments, action taken, and then we chase it. Yeah, okay. This is a nice piece, you can't leave the comments blank, so they have to put in notes on what was done. And that's kind of a quick run-through of the system. It's really a very basic, simple system that people follow through. I think what we're finding here in the early days, and don't forget, we're just three weeks in to school so far, and there's only been a few reports, um, but we need to work on getting more detail in there when they're doing the investigation, who they've interviewed, who they've spoken to, if it was a bullying event, who the bullies were, who the instigators were, who the victims were. So again, we can build the, the information. Um, and that's what we would see in the reports here. There's a basic overview, you can see one was canceled, one was closed, uh, it prevents, presents different charts of what the incidents were, and what categories they fell into. Um, staff involvement, as you start adding staff to it, they would show the staff here. Same things with participant breakdowns, some of the demographics, which, again, is an important pe- bit of information to have, so we can, uh, address things appropriately. Incidents by grade, um, again, depends where we are. Most of the incidents right now would fall into a few narrow areas, which is good, we don't want broad areas, if we can avoid it, but, um, hopefully, that just means there haven't been any incidents, not that there haven't been any reports. So, and then we can export the details if we need to, or whatever, um, additional work that needs to be done. Any, that's, that's basically the system, any questions?
I think, and I'd like to jump in real quick before we hit questions, is that, um, Jerry hit a very good point, that right now, there's the work that's being done to expand on the details, and so Maureen has been working very vigil- vigilantly. She's also, we also have the checklist, that when the checklist is completed, it comes back to her office, the district office, and so I can go review, she can review, she's been monitoring. So for example, we did have a case in a district where it was open for, um, some days, like beyond the checklist days, the timeline that aligns, not only aligns to DESI, but to the timeline in our checklist, and so it sent an alert, and I was able to forward it to her and say, are you aware of this case? She said, yes, it's still being investigated. So, you know, really, as she works, it is a new system, but as we work, we're gonna continue to work in saying, you know, expand on the details, so there is a monitoring piece as well.
Yeah, and I think it's important for the, the investigators, or the people that are tasked with this, to know that, yeah, they can be investigating, but at least go in here and make note of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you kinda stop that timer and start the next one going. So we wanna know that work is being done. If they don't go in and do that, we have no idea anything's being done, and so that's important. I just wanted to show you in the settings, this, again, is Summit Academy, and these are the people that are notified every time a bullying report is filed. You know, Dr. Herman, Maureen Fleming, uh, my, my assistant director and data lead also, as well as Mr. Slovan. And each school has their designated investigators and people that are notified, so.
Sarah.
There's no s- there's no switch on these lights, I believe.
Try heading it just to see.
Yep, if I'm, if I'm, sorry. Um, I'm, I hope it, I think you can customize the fields, because, um, I think that it might not be, I think, where did it occur, maybe it was in front of the class, maybe they don't know what time it was, and they're just in the hallway between, um, so I wonder if there could be, um, flexibility, or if they were, uh, to, when, uh, when.
Yeah, um, it could be customized, however, if you consider every room, in, say, the high school, the list would get long very quickly, um, and it's better to have just a, a field with general notes, where they can put that information, and, and I'll tell you, as, as the person who has to look at a lot of the security camera video, things are often very vague as far as what time it happened. And so, um, ho- hopefully, the, the people doing the investigation will also realize that, and when they say it happened at lunchtime, they'll kinda look at a larger window of time than just twelve noon, or, you know, generally, you would get information like, oh, it was during first lunch, or during second lunch, which gives a much narrower window of time.
I'd like to add, Sarah, that, really, honestly and truly, that a lot of times in these situations, what the intent is to, for the students to submit and for you to get the grab of information from them, it has to be end-user friendly. The role of the investigator is then to dig a little bit deeper, to determine what occurred, where it occurred, and to put that information inside of the system. So, um, if it, 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 it creates the opportunity also for, and I agree with Jerry, whether it happened in a classroom, or if it happened in a hallway, what we start to see as a school district is that, what are common areas that bullying takes place, what are common times a day, is it mostly in the morning, is it mostly in the afternoon, is it in a transition period, you know? And so what we're doing too is, we start to look at the data from that standpoint as well. I think that if it becomes too long and cumbersome, and it becomes overwhelming for an already traumatic situation, so we wanna make sure that it's end-user friendly, so we can capture from them quickly what it is that occurred, and then allow the investigators to go in and delve deeper.
When you say, when you say end-user, do you mean, do you mean the student?
No, I mean, the student, the family, the, the person who has to input the bullying report. So, again, the, the, one of the complaints that we had before was that it was hard, the previous system, you know, it wasn't as, and I say end-user, 'cause I always think, I, I can't say it's just gonna be students, 'cause some parents file a bullying report on behalf of their child, or caregivers, um, or someone may observe a bullying situation and submit a report, just because I saw it, but the other, the actual victim did not report it. So our thought process is, how do we capture as much information to address the situation from the person? And, and that's why there's that level of anonymity too, where it's like, do you wanna be contacted? Because maybe you're an observer of the bullying situation, you don't wanna be contacted, but you wanted to let us know that there was this incident of bullying that you observed.
Yeah, we also see staff putting in bullying reports.
Yes, that's true.
So, maybe it was reported to a counselor instead of directly to a teacher or a parent or something, and then they will put it in, so.
How will we take a minute and get our, like?
Somebody has a mic.
Yeah, let's, well, let's just take a break for a minute, rather than taking a break, arranging all sorts of things.
Back up, shake a minute.
Sorry.
We're taking a break for a minute.
Back up, shake a minute.
We're taking a break for a minute.
Like the type of incident that was occurring? And I was wondering if you can select multiple different?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question was, how do you distinguish between an incident that was deemed, it happened, but it didn't arise to the level of the definition of bullying, and an incident that was not confirmable or determined to be untrue?
Okay, well bullying has a very specific definition, which...
No, no, what I'm saying is, in the form, if the, one of the results was confirmed, or closed unfounded. But what's the difference in the report from an incident that was deemed not bullying, and an incident that was deemed not true, or corroborated?
In the details, where I said there was a box there that I couldn't quit the page without putting some information in. So they would put the notes in that, you know, while this did occur, and it was, you know, harassment of some kind, it did not rise to the, meet the standards set for bullying.
So I think what you're asking also results in through the investigation. And that's one of the key things. And what I think we will do is we'll take the list of questions as well, and make sure that Maureen is able to further expand on it. But in terms of when it's unfounded, it lends to like, there's a lack of evidence, but something was done. It also goes to what Jerry is saying, perhaps it wasn't bullying, it was harassment. And so the bullying was not found to be true, but then we found incidents that this was harassment, because it didn't meet the bullying definition. And so what Jerry is saying is that it becomes unfounded because maybe it didn't happen multiple times, because of the definition, or maybe it's not under this category, or... And so it is something, but it's not bullying.
So I think what my concern is, is that when it is harassment, and it doesn't rise to the level of bullying, there still needs to be follow-up, it still needs to be timely, and I feel like it still needs to be within the reporting system until the situation has been addressed, even if it isn't qualified as bullying. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think, I think what you're asking is happening. Because remember that, one, we can't close, and that's what Jerry alluded to prior. Because we get to see on the data table probably, the, just for lack of, Tillman. Tillman came up in the system, and there's one report where bullying was unfounded. But then, bullying is the result of the perspective of the victim, right? And so Tillman doesn't bully me, or affect me, harass me more than once. He then moves on to Sarah Bass. Tell me you're all over the place. And now, and now, it's, the same thing happens, and it's like, it's unfounded. What we get to see is that Tillman is now a repeat offender, where he is not bullying a specific person, but there are instances where there is harassment, or something that may not have resulted, or met the meaning of the definition of bullying, but it is a person who has a tendency. Now it gives us the opportunity to implement behavioral interventions and supports for Tillman, and say, sorry Tillman, he's really a nice person, community. And so, and to support him that way. But it's never deleted. So we get to see, and so that's the one thing I want to make sure that you understand, it is still in our system, even if it's unfounded. And it's still something that we can go back to. It's still something that we can say, well, these amounts of unfounded incidents happen in this classroom during this day. So the data is critical and key into how do we develop programs and next steps.
Right, so what they can do is, when you go to the interventions, even though it's not bullying, you can still have an intervention, that maybe you counseled the student, or you called the caregiver to report this. You know, the point is to get, to get it to stop before it rises to the level of bullying.
Thanks Jerry, this is, and Dr. Z, and everyone who was involved, this is great, and I think it's going to be a huge improvement over the previous. My first thing is not specific to BRIM, but can you show us the ARPS homepage? The, those links at the top don't appear on mobile. They never have, even with the previous bullying. So like, I'm looking at it on my phone, and I, and I don't, like, it's easy to see the report bullying harassment here, but on mobile, I don't see it at all. So maybe it's there somewhere, but it's like really hard to find. So that's just a note for you, that like, it's not easy to find the report bullying harassment on mobile, which I think is probably what a lot of families, especially students are going to be using.
We're working on the website.
All right. But maybe there's another way to make it more obvious on mobile where this form is.
Yeah, I think, well, if you look, I don't want to, can't show my phone really, but you see these large boxes here? Is, we can add,
Okay.
Say, or this dead one is, it says reporting forms, we could put
Yeah.
Another link to the bullying.
That would be right, something to just put it on.
And those do show up.
Yeah.
You know, on the...
On mobile, yeah, I see that.
So.
Great, thank you. Okay, I have, I have some input on the, on the form. So it seems like we have some customization ability?
Some, yes.
The, when you're entering the report, and it asks you to identify yourself, the first option is, I am the victim? Which I understand is for like, if this happened to you, if it was you that was bullied, that's what you would pick. But somehow that just struck me as a turnoff, or a little intimidating, like, of course, yes, if you were the one who was bullied, you are the victim, but I don't know that if you, if you are bullied, you necessarily think, I'm the victim. I mean, maybe you do, I don't know, I just, it's just, when I saw that, it was just a little bit of a, it was a little jarring. So I don't know if there, if we can think about another way to identify, like, this happened to me? Or something that's less, a little bit of a turnoff?
For example, I'm not sure.
Yeah, just something to think about. It's, just to say I'm the victim, it's just, it just struck me as a little bit of a turnoff. Like it might prevent people from filling it out.
I'm not sure that we can necessarily...
Change that one.
Change that part of it, that's more of a programmatic issue by the vendor, but I will discuss it with them, they're pretty open to hearing input.
And the other one is, do you want to be contacted? I think that's what it says. And there might be a case where like, I don't want to be contacted, but I'm open to you contacting me. Like, I'm open to being contacted is different from, I want you to contact me. So just another thought of rewording that question to being like, are you open to being contacted? As opposed to, do you want to be contacted? Just, this is just input for you guys to think about. So I'm building on Anna's question. Can you show us, or what are the options for closing a case?
Okay, well, closing are pretty basic. Let me see if I can get to it here. So... This is, I believe, the options. Here, but there is also, trying to remember the other page, sorry. Bouncing around a lot. Final investigation, I think. Nope, that was the same place. Sorry. These were the interventions. Uh, where was it? Sorry, I'm...
That's okay.
What's the question while he looks, so that he can put?
I, based on Anna's question, it seemed to be like, these are the options that you can choose when a case is closed, like it was.
Right there.
Sorry.
So it's, yeah, it's the incident status. And so it keeps us like, in progress, closed, canceled, closed, unfounded.
And, so just walk me through this, why would you need both closed and closed, unfounded?
Because if it's a bullying case and it's closed, then we've closed the bullying case, and we'll put all of the comments in on the bottom that this was bullying, you know, what it was, how many times it occurs, that would be a, closed, unfounded goes back to, there was, because again, someone files a report because something happened to them. We investigate it, but it may not fit the legal definition of bullying. So, but we've investigated, we've put interventions in place, we've addressed what the problem may be, but it's just not found to be bullying. So it goes back to where Anna was saying, like, even if it's harassment, even if someone, you know, felt targeted, if they felt unsafe, it may not amount to the definition of bullying, but we still had to do something for it. So we've closed the case, and it's not, it doesn't meet the definition of bullying, but it still was a case that we investigated, this is the things that we did, it's just, it wasn't found to be bullying.
Yeah, unfounded doesn't mean nothing occurred.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's crit, I know it seems like, oh, it's a bullying platform, but that's critical data, because what we, and we need to start having the conversations that, not because something didn't happen to me three times by the same person, doesn't mean that it didn't impact me. Doesn't mean that something doesn't need to be done. So it's critical for us to say that even though it may not have amounted to bullying, it is still something that occurred, and we needed to address.
So I think, what I'm thinking about is, you know, like, I'm not a lawyer, but like, there's a difference between innocent and not guilty. And like, unfounded could mean bullying did not occur, or didn't rise to the level of bullying, or it could mean, we couldn't find the evidence to prove that this happened. So like, I know of cases where a bullying, a report is filed, and then it's investigated, and all of the student witnesses deny that anything happened. And then the case is closed to be, found to be not bullying. And it's not because you, we know it didn't happen, it's because we couldn't come up with any witnesses or evidence that it did happen. So that's just what I'm thinking about.
And that would go under comments, right? But the critical part of the data would go back to the example that I gave. If we start to see that there is a repeat in the offenders, and a repeat in the type of incidents, and a repeat in the place that things are happening, then we start to see that, okay, this is one, this is two, and it's the same group of students. Or it's the same two people, or it's the same person again. We start to see the trends and can start to intervene.
Right, okay. So then it's more just for the administration, and the school committee, and the community to know, closed, unfounded does not mean like, we don't have to worry about that. It's just, it's just one of the options that best fit that report.
Just didn't rise to the bullying, definition of bullying, is all that really means.
Thank you.
William? First, it's so much better, so I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. And thank you, everyone who's been working on it. On finishing up what Anna and Jennifer were saying, is there any way that we could add, like, closed, not bullying, and closed, possible harassment? Like, is there any way that we could add, change those incident statuses to have to where it is closed, it's not bullying? Just in a personal note, that closed, that unfounded word was in a report that I received, and it just rubs the victim as in, that what you have, what took place didn't actually take place. So could we change that to not bullying, closed? And then, it still irritates me a little bit that this form online says bullying and harassment, and it's bullying harassment reporting, but the data is tracking bullying. If we could have that, say, closed, possible harassment, then it could also track harassment. Does that make sense? Because you're also going to have students that come in, and they fill out the report just to be funny. And that's actually going to be unfounded, like, unfounded, unfounded. But if there's harassment involved, then I feel that unfounded word is just not appropriate.
So what Jerry's going to show you right now is that the incident status is one of the custom fields that we can actually address and adjust. I think that we would want to make sure that it's a team decision as well.
Totally.
Because the individual who leads this from the district level want to make sure that everyone that's now, once we make this adjustment, Jerry is going to put it in, but then we want to see implementation, that we have clear understanding of what it is. And I get it, that it's a bullying and harassment form, and I do know that we, well, we thought that that was a catch-all. And I can see too, where we start to see where the statuses may or may not be. But I would want us to make sure that with anything, we have clear definitions as to what it should and shouldn't be. And the data will start to be very critical for us to say, this is harassment versus just being unfounded on its own. So I do, I do see where everyone is coming from, but I also would like to make sure that from a team and collaborative effort, that the team is very aware, they're clearly able to define it, the investigators understand where it's going to be before we fully implement it.
Yeah, and I think that's important, to get accurate closure, classification also.
Right.
So that...
I have a couple more. I really liked that you added sounds to that, so thank you, I know that was a huge community concern, and I saw sounds was one of them.
Yes.
Checklist, so thank you. You have mentioned that if the, if Tillman is bullying everyone, it's going to show up.
Because he's just all over the place at this point.
So if Tillman is bullying Sarah Bass, and then I bully Sarah Bass, and Deb... and Deb bullies Sarah Bass. Sorry. Can you pull the data for Sarah Bass to see that she's getting bullied from multiple sources? Or is it only pulling from the bullies?
So actually, can you go back to the reports, Jerry? There was a, on the charts, I think it was, was it charts or participant breakdowns? Which one was it?
I think also under student involvement, as they build names, you might get.
Right.
Victims, so.
And scroll down? Keep going, motivation, incidents, it might be under, where was it? I, I know I saw, um, participant breakdowns? It's under reports. On the side, under reports, participant breakdowns. Uh, black on the left, under ribbon on the left? Under reports.
Oh.
Yeah, come down one.
Am I apologizing?
Okay, so right here, you'll notice it says, "The bullies and the victims." So it says a total number of incidents, how many, the percentage of males, females, students on IEPs, learning plans, um, you know, and then you scroll down, you see victims by ethnicity. So we do, we recollect both sets of data, who the bullies are, but who the victims are. So again, data is key and critical. So we can start to put some interventions in place and work with Sarah Bass to build her strengths as well to determine what are some things that are happening? How do we support her through this? So again, it's all about the picture that we're capturing and, and my team knows, there's a lot of noise, but bring me the data. And so this is very critical for us in terms of who are we supporting? How do we support them? What are the incidents that keep happening? Maybe she wore a really nice shirt today and everyone wants to just tell her about the shirt. But, you know, and then maybe Tillman is acting up more in the morning during his math classes than he does and in the afternoon, so we start to look at time of day. Like, there are different things that we would start to notice and be able to see those trends and intervene.
So my, my concern is that, I just want to make sure, I know in the last reporting, in the last investigation style that the district was doing, is whatever the person inputted into the form, that was the only thing that was investigated. So if Sarah Bass had been harassed by three different individuals and she filled out three different bully reports, they would never look at the whole picture of all the bully reports. So I just want to make sure, because if she's been harassed three times, and that would be repetitive, and so then it would come back into play and those multiple reports now could be bullying. And we've never had a way to track that, to make sure that Sarah Bass, because of the multiple harassments, is now actually getting bullied.
So I think, like Jerry said, we're only about a month or so in. And so this is our new platform, but the richness of it, as you can see, is we're delving deeper into the data than we've had, than we had with the previous system.
Yeah, I, I think as it starts populating the information with the student data. So say in, in this example that you were giving here, we would see that Sarah, poor Sarah Bass was bullied by three different individuals, but then you would start investigating, is that a cohort? Are these all friends that are now taking turns? So that it doesn't show, seem like, you know, Tillman's doing it multiple times. He's got all his, his cronies.
And I just have one last quick one. If the student just did the first screen and finished, do people get notified?
Yes.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Uh, Deb? So having. Can I just speak loudly or should I?
You sure it's not working?
Oh, it is. Okay. What flags pop up? So Doc, or maybe this is a question for you. So for you, if something has been reported and not investigated or not closed within 10 days, you get a flag?
10 days?
Or?
So it, it follows the bullying investigation timeline. And so I get an email, for example, I got an email that said, um, immediately I get an email, bullying report has been submitted. So I get to see, I see what school, I see the incident, I don't, I would have to go into the dashboard to see who it was. When it, when it's open, when the progress has changed, I get notified, progress has changed. If it has been open and there has been an incident so far, if it has been open, it sends me something that says, "This bullying report is two days away from hitting the deadline" or some, you know, basically. And it says, or it has, it has exceeded the timeline. I, what I did the last time is I forwarded it to Maureen and I said, "Are you aware of this incident? I got this notification." Her response back to me was, "I already contacted," because she gets the notification the same time I get the notification. I missed, because of my emails, I missed the one prior that said you had two days, you know, notification. I got the one that says, "It is like a day," so I was like, "Wait a minute." And she was able to say she already contacted the school, it's in progress. She, so we were able to be notified timely. And then we're also notified when it's closed. When it's closed, because of our new timeline, um, I think one was closed at a school this week, we were able to look and say, "Wait a minute, we didn't get the checklist." We weren't, it, you can't close a bullying investigation just like that anymore because the new checklist that we have says, "You're not to make that decision on your own, you kind of have to always contact and these things." So really, honestly and truly, it's working in tandem with our checklist. So even though we have the platform, we're also looking at the timelines and things that we have in place.
The, um, so the new bullying and prevention plan, is that available?
Yes.
So that's the one that we looked at last with the timeline?
The, the, yes.
They're, they're, we haven't seen the plan presented to us, I don't think.
It hasn't been presented to this full body.
I don't think so. The, the intervention plan, right? We haven't seen.
Yeah.
I don't think we've been presented, we presented the policies, we haven't, it's online, I think.
Okay, right.
It's online, okay.
Okay, so we'll work on having that presented.
Okay, that would be helpful. And I had a question about, similar to what William was getting at. So, okay, poor Sarah Bass, is there a flag that will pop up to let somebody know that, you know, her shirt's a real issue and she needs help? Or is that just something you have to go into the data and look at yourself?
So as we start to build a culture, it is something that we have to go in and look at ourselves, right? But as we start to build the culture of data conversations, build a culture of data use, it, it, it's gonna be car, come a part of our regular conversation. Because what we're gonna start doing too is crosswalking BRIM with EH. Like, as we build the data dashboard, all of that data is gonna filter into the dashboard. So we'll start to see, how many teachers are reporting through EH, what's happening? Educator handbook, what's happening? Are we seeing a correlation with this, with, with BRIM and seeing that these same students are showing up in multiple databases? What are we now doing? We also get to stop and see, hey, from, you know, how many times? And again, because it's so early in the school year, we don't have enough data across the district to see how deeply we can dive. So as we start to dive deeper, as I'm, we don't want a lot of bullying reports.
Right.
So let's not say, but as we start to develop programming to address the needs, we are going to delve into it deeply.
Okay, and last question. The definitions that we were looking at for bullying require the incident to be repeated?
Yes.
So if you have an individual incident reported, would it default be not repeated until you have several of those?
So what, what we have, that's the importance of the investigation, right? Because individuals report, I'm, I'm gonna say the straw that breaks the camel's back. Like, they may report this incident that occurred today and when we sit and investigate and speak with them, they're able to verbalize a series of other, other incidents that have occurred and then the investigator starts to delve deeply into, okay, did this happen? Who was the witness, you know? And then we start to clearly see what happened, what occurred, what is the timeline?
I did say it was the last question, but it's connected. So say I have three incidents that I report, all the same person, like Tillman, Tillman and Tillman, morning, afternoon and evening. Does that?
That then, that also constitutes bullying, yes.
So does that get categorized as three, and you find to, all of those separately are found as founded?
So if all three are closed, unfounded, it then would become a bull, a, it would become bullying clumped together, like, it would be, when we add, when we agree on saying, let's say we add bullying, uh, closed harassment, and we look back at it and we realize we have now three incidents of closed harassment, because it's a repeat of the same person with the same individual, it, it now constitutes bullying.
One incident or three?
Again, it has to happen multiple times. So e, so if, if today, William bullied Bridget, which I, I don't see it, but okay. They're really nice. Today, talked about her hair, heard her feelings, that happened today, she reported it. We said, okay, it's closed, it's harassment, it's, it's not there. The next day, William took Bridget's pencil in front of three people, but no one else, him and Sarah Marshall did not want to admit to it, so it was unfounded, but we now have closed, unfounded. The, two, a couple of weeks later, William walks in and pushes the back of Bridget's chair, she reports it. At this point now, we have three incidents where Bridget has reported an inter, a negative interaction with William and now we can start to say, "William, you are bullying Bridget."
Okay, thank you. Bridget?
Well, I think, can, is that working?
Yeah.
I think the first thing I wanted to say is, I'm just feeling a lot better, y'all. We, you know, 18 months ago, this community erupted, everything was out, I was in this library and I felt deeply moved to try and do something. And now, as a committee, we hired a new superintendent, we have this new form up, we have a bullying plan, we have our bullying policy, we have this website up and running and it's just a big sense of relief. So I just wanted to, to say, like, I feel that and I feel like we can all be proud of where, where we're going. I'm really happy to see the data tracking because repeated in the bathroom or in a certain location, then educators can get on top of the hotspots and it's, it's really just a very smart and skillful system. I still think, you know, on the opposite side, I'm thinking a lot about climate and the positive aspects and, um, and I'm really glad, even the question I started out with was about educator handbook and how, how you deal with that and you've even got that in, so I'm really happy.
Margaret?
I'm just curious, because this link is sitting there for anybody. Have you talked to people at other places that have used this and have they had any experience with a lot of not real incidents being reported? People who are perhaps taking advantage of this to spam us? Do something that they shouldn't be doing?
I mean, even with the old system, we didn't have a lot of that. There were some of it, sure, and they're easy to weed out, but.
Okay.
And, and if they name names, then we still have to investigate. And then it may just be unfounded, but, and, yeah, you could say it's a waste of time, but it's not. Because it's the one time it is real, it, it, it erases all of the.
Right, no, I was, I was just curious if you've had any information whether it's being taken advantage of. That's all.
A lot of places don't kind of talk about that, that there's X number of false reports or whatever.
Okay.
They tend to talk about how effective it is and stuff, so.
This is a really great system. And I think the thing that impresses me is that it's a dynamic system, i.e. that when an event occurs, it flashes on the screen of people who are going to be responsible for follow-up, et cetera. Especially, it shows up on superintendent's screen, which I think is impressive, which means that it is, in reality and in practice, a dynamic system.
Sarah?
So last winter, when we were talking about the old system, I remember hearing, I'm not sure from whom, that the kids didn't know, necessarily know about the button in the platform because they never went to the website. And we talked about putting it, or a link, or something on whatever it says, if it's Power School or somewhere else, like in Google Classroom or somewhere, where the kids are actually gonna find it and know about it and use it. So I, I just hope that, um, it's very easy for kids to access. They don't have to go somewhere they don't ever otherwise go. So, just a comment. And then I'm, it went by kind of fast and I saw the different categories of, like, it was, um, it was a threat or intimidation or physical or whatever. Was there an option for something like antisemitic? There, I saw racist, but there was certainly an outbreak of complaints of antisemitic comments and, you know, and that's not the only possible. And I don't know whether there's a, like, religious category or you call that ethnic.
Religious comments and harassment.
Yeah, that's one of the ones we added, that's a custom.
I do want to address your comment, though. Sarah, I, I don't want to let it go unfounded. One of the things that we want to be mindful of is access and even putting it on the website. So one, we have, through Seth, updated our, like I said, our Facebook and different mediums, we are going to continue to share it. Our students are not on Parent Square. Our students actually go through our homepage and have different access through Google to, to do whatever they need to in their emails and stuff like that. One of the critical things that we are going to work on is branding and creating like QR codes, posters, a whole like safe zone campaign. So really, if we think about the students that we serve today, it's their ac, ease of access, especially at the high school, is using QR codes, not putting it on a website. So I just want to make sure that, even if you don't see it on a website, we have to speak the language of the students and put, put it into what they may seem accessible. I know we're getting late, so I'm gonna, because we have a lot to do, I'm gonna hit, hit.
All right, any very final quick comments, William?
I just wanted to say, thank you again. And it also really looks like, not only do you have a new system, it looks like that you, Dr. Z, thank you, that it looks like you are redirecting the investigators to do investigations differently and I really appreciate that. And just want to tell the community that you're doing a great job.
Excellent, my team. Okay, real quick?
Yep.
Yep.
Power School? They live on Power School.
Who lives on Power School?
The students, they walk around, my, my, well, in my experience, my high school students spend a lot of time looking at that little blue box. Is there any way of putting a link on that, that possibly?
Yeah, I'll talk with Cody to see if, I mean, if we can customize the pages.
Excellent. Margaret? Did you want to, maybe do something with your meeting?
Yes, I am moved, I guess. I move to adjourn the Pelham School Committee meeting.
I second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.
I move to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
All right.
I was still in favor for you.
Thank you so much for coming and talking to us about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Does anyone else need a projector?
Track and field is the first thing on the.
Track and field. I've done that, you know where you are. Excellent. Well, thank you both so much for coming and, um, Dave Zomeck and Bob Parent are going to give us a track and fields update. Take it away.
Great. Thank you very much for having us. As always, we're excited to come and give you updates. For those of you who, I think everyone in front here knows who we are, but for those behind us and in the audience, I'm Dave Zomeck, I'm the Assistant Town Manager. I'm joined by Bob Parent, who is our Special Capital Projects Manager and he has been a huge help on this project and a number of other projects, including our new elementary school at Fort River. And we're here tonight to, at the request of the Chair, to just give you a brief update and answer any questions you might have on the project. Our focus over the last couple of months since we saw you last has really been in four areas. Design development. Uh, design development, uh, staff input and outreach, and permitting, and then uh, funding, uh, seeking funding uh, from various other sources. Can you hear me now, is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and I'll I'll turn it over to Bob for some of those updates. Um, but why don't I give you a quick, um, why don't we start with design? Just, do you want to give a quick update on design, Bob, and we'll go in order as I stated on?
Certainly, the design is progressing as we expected. Uh, been working very closely with SLR, who's the designer that the district retained to complete the project. Uh, we have preliminary plans that have been produced, we have shared those preliminary plans with school district staff, with athletic department staff as well, we've gotten very good feedback from all those groups. Um, we are really gearing up to hit the permitting phase hard right now. Uh, we expect to be submitting to the Conservation Commission in the town of Amherst in the next couple of days. Um, and right now, we're tentatively looking at an October twenty-third date for a public hearing, that hasn't been set yet, but that that would be the soonest that we would have a hearing with the Conservation Commission. Um, similarly, we are getting ready to submit to the Design Review Board, which is a town board that any municipal project has to be submitted to, we are tentatively looking at meeting with them on October twenty-first to present the project. They're an advisory, design-level review group to the Planning Board. Uh, they provide recommendations to the Planning Board, and we are tentatively looking to meet with the Planning Board um, either on October thirtieth or November sixth. So it's really where we expected to be at this point, where, you know, we've got the design far enough advanced that we can then start putting the design in front of staff, in front of the Public Works Department, who are going to be involved in some of the maintenance activities, um, get their feedback and put it in front of the permitting departments as well.
I did just want to emphasize that Bob and I met with the Athletic Director and some of the coaching staff last week, we had a very productive meeting, a lot of good feedback, and I believe they are now looking over the plans and will get you um, any any additional input in the in the days ahead. So that's, that's good. In terms of funding, uh, I think as most of you know, the Amherst CPA Committee recommended eight hundred thousand dollars for the project. Um, I will, I have been and will continue to work with the Town Manager, as well as the President of the Council, to line up that vote. Um, we believe that vote will be sometime in November. Um, obviously, we want to try to get this project out to bid late this year, early in January. Um, but we want to have as much information, and I think you all know this, from the other towns as we possibly can. So we've been, uh, first to Pelham, and we were very grateful that Pelham voted to recommend ninety-nine thousand dollars uh, toward the project, to their town meeting, to their special town meeting in the fall, that's my understanding. And we'll continue to work with Pelham. Uh, you may recall, they already gave ten thousand dollars toward the project. Um, so um, that's where, actually, I think they gave eleven, to make it an even one-ten. Uh, my math was off there by a little. And then we also met with Chutesbury CPA, uh, I believe that was last week. And they recommended a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars uh, toward the project. And again, I believe they will be holding a a special town meeting this fall. Um, that leaves Leverett, and my understanding is, they are not likely to take this up off-cycle. Um, I'll continue to talk with them, um, but it is likely that they would take it up at their regular spring town meeting. So we'll get, slot into, they have the application, it's my understanding, they have the application, that was submitted by by regional staff. Um, but um, they would likely take it up in the spring. So that's all the information I have, we're very grateful and excited that we have two out of three of the of the other communities uh, with their commitment, uh, and those were the figures that we requested from them. There was no change in those those numbers. Um, and those numbers were derived by staff here, uh, from the region, not by the town. Again, Bob and I are here to support the region, uh, we're committed to the project, we want to make it happen, as you know. And I think uh, once um, we know those numbers are locked in, then I'll work with the President of the Council to come back to them for that vote on the eight hundred thousand. I think it's no surprise that um, the council would like to see a level of commitment from Leverett, Pelham, and Chutesbury before they take their vote um, uh, late this year. Um, we may not get the the Leverett vote, but we'll, hopefully, we'll get the other two. So that's where we are, again, I think uh, we're we're trying to keep on schedule, Bob's doing an amazing job, and our our designer, who you've met, SLR, Kevin and his team are excellent, and we feel they've been very responsive to our our questions and our concerns, and we're looking forward to try to get this out to bid late this year. We're happy to come back later, there will certainly be more questions. You may recall, we talked about um, ad alts and and all of that, we're not there yet. We're happy to come back to you later this fall and give you an update on that, because I think that's where everybody will have more questions.
Yeah.
What are we doing about the lights, what are we doing about this? We're trying to keep, obviously, all the core pieces of the project intact, and our hope is that we have all the funding amassed so that we can pay for as much of it in one phase as possible. So I'll stop there.
Excellent, thank you very much. Jennifer?
Uh, thank you for the update. So um, what is the amount that we requested from Leverett? And will we be able to go out to bid in December or January without already having that commitment from Leverett?
I gotta look at the Leverett, I think that you've got the Leverett.
Yes, I believe the amount that's been requested from Leverett is one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Um, the strategy for bidding the project, we talked about, or really Kevin from SLR talked about before, which was to create ad alternates. And the ad alternates allow us to go ahead and bid the project, award the project, because we can only award a project and execute a contract for which there is funding in place for. At the same time that we're working on, um, hopefully obtaining the necessary funding to complete some or all of the alternates that we identified.
Anna?
Oh, uh, so, um, I know that the design firm has been doing a lot of measurements and looking at a lot of things to I was wondering if any of those results have had cost implications for the project? Um, like additional work or less work that they needed to do to bid out? I know that we're not going to get hard numbers until we actually bid out the contract, but, or the 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 construction, but is there anything that's informing costs right now?
I would say that there haven't been any surprises, there haven't been anything that we didn't expect. The costing process is generally to complete the design, and then when we get to the, the design is complete, then we do an updated cost estimate. And we had talked about previously, when we get to that point, we might then make a recommendation to reduce the contingency amount. But the reason to have a contingency is, there may be unknowns that you don't fully discover until you get through the design process and the permitting process. As you get through that, and you get to the point where you're close to go out to bid, then there's much less uncertainty and a higher level of comfort that the estimate um, will be reasonably accurate, and that the contingency amount, we absolutely will want to go to bid with the contingency amount, we want to retain typically at least five percent contingency going into construction. But we may be able to reduce from what had been allocated originally.
Sarah?
Dave, did I understand you to say, or maybe implied, that council doesn't want to take up the vote on the CPA recommendation until Pelham and Chutesbury have had their fall town meetings and approved? Is that what you were saying?
I think there's um, there's a strong feeling that the Amherst Town Council would like to have more, the most up-to-date information they possibly can on what the other communities have voted toward the project before they take their vote. Because that number, you recall, that number, eight hundred thousand could be seen as well above what might have been expected to be the ask when we made that ask out of sequence to the Amherst CPA. We were fortunate to make a strong case with SLR, you know, with us, and um, the CPA, you know, voted to recommend that to the council, but I think they would, you know, they would like, they know about these numbers already, of course, I I reported those to the to the President of the council, so I think um, if those town meetings can make those votes this fall, that would be extremely helpful.
And do you, or maybe folks here, know when those meetings are scheduled? I assume they have been scheduled.
I I believe they have, I don't have them off the top of my head, but
Uh, like, October, November?
I don't actually
Pelham is October fifteenth.
Thank you, that's all. I can, I can look.
Seven P M.
I just wondered, you don't have
My quick Google Chrome does not pull up Chutesbury's. It's not scheduled yet?
I don't think so.
Oh, then my Google Chrome cannot pull it up.
Well, while we're, if you are looking for those, two quick additions, one is, we do want to get a sign up at the site. Um, you know, I think it's important for the community to know this is happening, of course, we all know. Um, we've been trying to, you know, there's been periodic um, um, updates in the in the Gazette and Bulletin, but I think it's important for the community, for the students, for the athletes, for the coaches to know, this is, this is real, we all work with Bob and SLR. Uh, of course, we'll work with the permitting departments in the town to get up some sort of a sign at the site that is visible as as students um, walk to and from the the building uh, this fall and in the spring, that something is going to happen, and it's going to be very exciting in the summer of twenty-five. So we'll work on that. I also want to say that we will, we are collaborating, our accounting department is collaborating closely with the Superintendent's Office to make sure that um, SLR gets paid, and and right now, you know, it's a fairly straightforward process. We know what the contract is with SLR, um, and until this uh, uh, contract is awarded for the construction, it's pretty straightforward, and Bob is is expert at this and is helping our accounting department, as well as any uh, uh, help that we can offer the region. So I think we're in very good shape with the contract at this point for design.
Can I, can I follow up?
Yep.
Sorry, so are you two, I mean, the region is the applicant. So are you two representing the region to CONCOM, or is somebody from? Or maybe we have, don't know yet?
So we, so we are actually um, working, but Dave has been working on this project before I came in. And so I I yield to his lead, but he's in, been in clear communication. Um, he's worked with Shannon, um, providing updates. Like, we had the meeting with the Athletic Director, we are in collaboration, I am always notified, so, yes. Thank you.
Procedurally, on the notice of intent on the application form that's filed, the district is identified as the applicant.
Right.
For the property that the district owns, which is the majority of the property, the district is identified as the property owner. A piece of this project is actually located on town-owned property, so we have to submit two application forms as part of the notice of intent. I will be identified as the representative of, on both of those application forms.
I signed those today to I to to review the the wetlands, so I signed it as a property owner and for the
Deb?
I don't know who's currently on the board at the boosters. But before we have a final number, it is worthwhile reaching out to the current boosters to see if they would be willing to reach out to their um, donors who rescinded their donations. And if they're not, then I think it would be worthwhile for any of us, or for another group to do so.
They've already said no.
I I've gotten different information.
Oh, wow.
Well, then you reach out to the booster staff, and since you got that, I'm getting, yeah.
But I think once it goes through um, CONCOMs. CONCOMs? Leverett and Chutesbury.
Oh, CPA.
CPAs, yeah, that's it, that's, yeah.
Lot of letters.
Yeah, I will do that.
Tillman?
As the Leverett representative, I'm sorry. I hope this doesn't cause too many problems, but it's really exciting to see that we're moving forward, and um, I'll try to advocate as much as I can for uh, commitment at the cycle that they're willing to do.
Absolutely, thank you.
Excellent, any further questions? I want to thank you both so much for all the work you've put into this and coming and
Sure.
sharing all the information that you've had so far, so
And we'll come back later, and again, rest assured, we will be working with the Superintendent on, and keep we're up to date on all the permitting, all the fundraising, or funding, and uh, we'll go from there, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep in touch. So we have our four towns meeting on Saturday. We're all going to be super excited. And Dr. Z has some information for us to look at before our our meeting on on Saturday.
Take it away, take it away, take it away now, all right. Um, so both the, really honestly and truly, there's been a lot of concern around the FY twenty-six budget and the process that we're currently in. Um, and I know that their request has come for us to have a four towns meeting a lot earlier. Um, and I think that based on the conversations and the work that I've done with the Budget Office, this is one of the earliest that we've started our projections, so I really want to be very clear to the community that what is the process that we're currently using, and what does that look like? What are the scenarios, and I know at the last meeting, Tillman, you were quite clear, you wanted us to walk through the scenario, so again, we wanted to kind of analyze and talk about what are the pitfalls or potential budget shortfalls that we could be facing, and kind of address those implications with our non-recurring funds. So we started to think about, in terms of the work beginning, what are our district operating costs, how do we run a tight ship, how do we fix things, how do things look differently than we usually do? And for me, I heard a lot of of three letters, um, a lot of it was FTE, FTE. And for the conversation that we've been having with the budget team is that this year, we're going to present the budget in terms that speak to what it truly is, people and operating costs. And so what you're going to see as we walk through this is, we're analyzing, what are those personnel costs? What are the operational costs, what does it look like? Um, we're looking at the fact that we are projecting for FY twenty-six. This is the year that we are now going out for a transportation RFP. So are there potential upcoming costs that we have to account for at the region? We also know that FY twenty-six is a year where we're going to have APEA negotiations, and that's our largest bargaining unit. And so we are looking at what are as, coming in as a new superintendent, what are some of the findings in terms of entry, in terms of programming, such as scheduling, that we may need to address to address some of the things at the union, and also, what are we not offering, and why are we losing students? Where are our costs when it comes to students? How much are we truly paying to, for our special education placements that are out of district? How much are we paying in terms of school choice to charters? So we're going to delve in today to what this process looks like in a preparation for our four towns meeting. So do you remember this? Um, this was presented April twenty twenty-four, the four towns meeting, where the approach from last year is very different from the approach this year. And you'll start to see what what I mean by that in terms of the work that the team and I are doing. And I'm always going to be very, very grateful to the fact that I have hard-working individuals in every aspect of the central office and the team. And so the first go-around, it really was that we looked at the fact, like, okay, what were we looking at? Guardrails were four percent, that was going to cost us approximately twenty FTE, um, a reduction, which is about twenty or so positions. The RSE, you guys asked the team to go back, what would it look like if we had six percent? Um, and that allowed us to restore approximately twelve to fifteen positions, student-facing position. Um, but what it essentially did is move the problem down the line. It didn't really address it, and that's critical for us to talk about no longer having Band-Aid effects. What are we going to do to truly make sure that we are creating an educational system? At least the basics, like, are we running the basic, a basic educational system where students can be successful? And so what I wanted to present to you is, what does it cost to run the region? Let's start with that conversation. So I'm going to go through with you what it costs to run the region. So in the middle school, you'll see that in terms of salaries, um, including staff stipends, it's four point nine million dollars in terms of personnel. Again, breaking the budget down, not in FTEs, but people and operations. And so what you see in the operating expenses is seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. What does that look like for the middle school, that's our contract? What does that look like for the middle school? That's our contracted services. That's their supplies to run classrooms. The high school is where the bulk of personnel cost sits at the region. So in the high school, what you're going to see is eleven point eight million dollars in personnel costs. And then one point five million dollars in operating expenses. Again, this is where contracted services, supplies, that's where that amount comes in to run the high school. Which makes sense. That's a larger population of teachers. That's a larger, that's where we have our department heads. That's where we have more individuals in terms of calls for substitute teachers. And we have our coaches. So there are different things that happen to run a basic educational program. Then we have our district or central office functions, which actually is the smallest salaries on the regional budget because it's two point eight million dollars. However, our operational cost is thirteen point eight million dollars. And the reason being is because this is where the district's transportation contracts would sit. This is where our district-wide special education contracts and services, including our out-of-district placements are paid from. This is where utilities and facilities costs come in across the region. This is where risk and benefits and our liability insurances are paid. So again, what does it cost to run the region? In F Y twenty-five, thirty-five point seven million dollars to run the full region. Middle school, high school, central office. And, uh-uh. Thanks. All right. So, again, we're going through the numbers so that we can do it. And I, I need us to get through it, Deb, so that we can hit, hit all the, because there are going to be more questions. So write your question now. So I wanted to visualize it for everyone again, in a way so that we can see what is the majority of schools spending. So what you're going to see is the district is forty-seven percent of the combined costs. Because again, this is not just personnel, it is personnel and operations. Middle school is sixteen percent of the regional budget when it comes to personnel and operations, and the high school is thirty-seven percent. But when we break it out in the bar, in the chart on the side, what you'll see is that at the district, more than eighty percent of the district expenses is actually operational costs. Whereas the largest personnel expenses are actually at the high schools. So we started to play around and say, what are the initial scenarios that we're looking at for F Y twenty? What assumptions can we put into place? What revenues are we going to receive? What is the worst-case scenario? Where do we need to be? Contract negotiations, transportation R F P. Let's start planning this out because what are we realistically facing? And what is it going to look like for F Y twenty-six? So the first question we ask ourselves are, what do we expect to spend in F Y twenty-six? And so we are expecting to spend approximately thirty-eight million, one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. But we have unknowns. We have A P E A negotiation coming forward. So of course, we know cost of living, COLA expenses. We have a transportation R F P, which we are now looking at. We also have to look at what services and gaps are, are, do we have in terms of our routes? We know that the costs in terms of transportation costs, fuel costs are going up. So we have to estimate what that R F P is going to come back to run at the region. Our liability insurance. We have possible, possible huge swings in our healthcare insurance. Because we're going to look at what losses we had and those conversations are coming forward. Then, the next question we've been asking ourselves is what monies can we expect to receive? So we're looking at chapter seventy, right? So we calculated an additional thirty dollars per student this year, which equated about approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars extra in F Y twenty-six. We also looked at all of the other reimbursements that would come forward and we're saying, okay, so our revenues will come up to about twelve million dollars. This is again, an estimation. These are not solid numbers, but we are estimating and showing you what our process will be. We also thought about in here, okay, what federal funding do we currently receive? And how do we address that? Because individuals are going to say, well, you didn't put a line in for your federal funds. Like, you didn't put a line in for circuit breaker and I D A or school choice. But that comes straight from the line already. We deduct that from the line in our budget. So that is actually something that, and I'm going through again what the process is. So it's not estimated as a revenue because it's already deducted from the cost line. So it's already taken out of the, of the budget. So again, how do we visualize this in F Y twenty-six? Looking again, very similar to what we saw before. Forty-seven, forty-four percent of our projected combined costs will sit at the district. Where we have personnel being small, but because of the overarching expenses to operate the district. And actually make sure the schools can function, that sits at the central office. Then we have again, the high school being the larger percent where over eighty percent of the high school expenses is personnel and then our middle school. So the scenario we are, I need to pose for you is, what happens if Amherst and Pelham removes the two percent? Because the letters that were posed to the regional school committee states about the one-time gift and reverting, removes the two percent from the base, from F Y twenty-five and holds at a two point five percent increase year over year. So think about this. We revert to the four percent and hold to two point five percent. The number that I need you to see, and I'm, I'm bringing it very, very largely up, is we would sit in F Y twenty-six at a two point six million dollar deficit at the region. I just want to, to let that simmer, right? So hold two point six million dollars in your mindset and let's look again at what it costs to run the region. Even if you realistically took every person from the region in the central office. Including your superintendent, because there would be no one to run the region in the central office. Even if we looked at, okay, let's balance it across because we still need to have the district function. Where will we cut it from? Would we cut it from the central office operating cost, which means we would be reducing transportation? Because everyone thinks about student-facing positions. But I wanted to realistically walk through what it takes to run the region. And as you can see, twenty-six is very in line with the project, in, in what it was spent with twenty-five. So where would we essentially pull the two point six million dollars from? And what would be that impact to running the region? The impact would be our, our instructional programs. We would not be able to run a basic instructional program or offerings to our students. That's the reality. And so when we look at it, the same chart side by side, with salaries representing about eighty to ninety percent of the regional budget. Two point six million dollars would devastate the quality of education provided in the region. Middle school, high school, coaching, athletics, everything would be affected. If we allow, or if we do not push, or if we do not present the fact that we cannot revert and the base needs to remain and we need to build upon that base. So what would be the future of the region is a very critical question. Which is, again, if Amherst and Pelham are to remove the two percent, our deficit in this year would be two point six million dollars. I want you to notice that in the upcoming three years, and I've enlarged it here, I, I pulled it out. In the upcoming three years, after the first year in F Y twenty-six, after we move the two point six million dollars, we would remain at close to a million dollar deficit each year. Where F Y twenty-seven, we would be at minus about seven hundred and fifty thousand and it would go up in F Y twenty-eight. We would cripple the region in a way that we would not be able to offer quality or competitive educational programs. We wouldn't probably even be able to offer base programs. So there are currently approximately three hundred and fifty employees at the region. We would be looking at a ten percent of jobs cut in F Y twenty-six if we remove that two percent from Amherst and Pelham. So who are our students and who will they become? All of the great things that Amherst Pelham Regional Public School offers. Our students want to be engineers, mathematicians, they want to be civic leaders, botanists, tradespeople, they want to be athletes, musicians, they want to be anything that they want to be. Realistically, the four towns that we serve send their children, our children to us. So we can craft their futures in a way that they can walk out of our buildings and be the best possible versions of themselves. And we have to understand that it takes three hundred and fifty bodies and people who are educators. And those educators are custodians, bus drivers, they are food service workers, they are teachers, they are paraeducators. Because I know we say that teachers are in the classrooms and they serve students, but for a teacher and for a child to have a well-rounded education, they have to eat something in the morning. The school system, the school building has to be clean. There has to be curricular supports. And so really honestly and truly, our children deserve the best. And they are more, and we are more than six percent. They are more than an F T E. They are more than two point six million dollars. The individuals that we need to consider are caregivers. We are all educators and we are ARPS. And so I really want to open up and say this to you. And I'm going to say this in a way that I've been framing it as I continue to work through these scenarios. I can't sleep at night as I continue to think about what we are taking from our children when we are willing to amount two percent to the dismantling of public education. And I don't know who can, if we think about the fact that we are willing to have a discussion around removing two percent and putting two point six million dollars at risk, which can cost us transportation, which can cost us meals, which can cost us educators, which can cost us the future of our children. So I open for questions.
My question was, the numbers that you're quoting for expenses at the beginning, is that general funds? You said that you had subtracted off the top the federal grants, but there's revolving funds that are also included in some of the calculations from the last budget. So is that like total expenses, general? Plus whatever's left of the revolving funds, the, like the athletic revolving and the circuit breaker. Now, those are the big ones. School choice.
Those are taken out of, those are already, and that's what I went back, in the monies that, that's under the monies we can expect to receive. So those were already adjusted within the lines.
Okay, just, I'm gonna double down on this because I never got clarity last year when we had these questions. So there's the revolving fund and there's the general fund and the two go together for our total income. And then there's our total expenses. These total expenses that we're seeing have already subtracted off our revolving funds. So these are general fund expenses.
Did you explain it correctly?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. And then there are no other sources of income besides the assessments from the state and the towns. That's it.
Go, go ahead.
General fund. General fund expenses correlate with tax assessments and money from the state. Right? Yes.
Okay, correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for this presentation, even though it's disturbing.
You're welcome.
You, you had a slide that says, what happens if Amherst and Pelham remove the two percent? And you're saying, are we going to tread this two percent? But like, what if Amherst and Pelham removes the two percent? That's asking like, what if Amherst and Pelham do what they have said all along they're going to do? Is that what, is that what we're saying?
Yes. Because we were asked to pull, we, we were asked to plan from this.
Yeah.
The letters were stated to, to plan without that additional two percent. And so this is the scenario we're presenting.
Right. So to me, the question is, is less, what happens if they do it? But like, they've told us they're going to do it. So I feel like, I, I feel like our, our, it feels like we're going into this four towns meeting saying, please don't do it. Please don't do it. You're going to devastate the school budget. Please don't do it because we want to serve our students. And you're saying, you don't sleep well at, you're not sleeping well at night. I, I think those town decision makers sleep fine. And I think they're going to sleep fine by, even when, if they remove the two percent. Sorry, that sounds really harsh, but they've already told us they're going to do it. They might not know the two point six million dollar deficit, but they, I think they know. They, I think they know what the amount, that, that, that this was going to be a devastating thing. So just, I don't like, we, I feel like we need, what, what is, like, to, just to go to them and say, please don't do this thing that you've already told us you're going to do. I just feel like we need to, I don't feel like that's gonna, it's, I, I don't see what the game plan is.
So one, we've been asked to start the budget processing earlier to present the numbers and to start preliminary conversations. The, and this is why it's the budget process. I, I never stated, please don't do this. I'm stating to them realistically what is going to happen and where we are planning from. So where we are planning from is this, but be very clear and make sure that the community is very clear. And the individuals who vote or who support these town individuals are very clear that when next year, we are not just looking at one or two or fifteen, we are looking at approximately thirty-five positions at the region. Thirty-five. That's a ten percent cut. So we are looking at approximately thirty-five positions. We are looking at reduced transportation services or costs. We are looking at what that's going to look at. And I know, I, I took my time, I reviewed, what were some of the issues that came up the last time with the budget? And that's why I made it quite clear. Two point six million right now, and this is preliminary conversations, this is preliminary numbers because we're estimating what, or projecting what we could possibly receive from chapter seventy, what we could possibly receive from these other areas. We can receive less. We could receive more. And these are all conversations around the fact, the reality is, we need to inform the four towns. So I'm not walking in there saying, hey, guys, don't do this. Nope. This is where we, you want to know what we are planning from. You want to know what it is that the superintendent and the team are planning ahead of time for. This is the scenario that you are facing us with. And note that it will increase from two point six. Because when we cannot offer programming to allow our children to play sports, they're going to choice out to another school. We're going to pay for that. When we cannot adequately provide special education programs, we are then going to have to place them out of district, which increases our costs. When we cannot adequately provide basic educational structures, we're putting ourselves at risk for not meeting graduation requirements. In, in essence, yes, you are holding steadfast your two percent. Just know, we are also looking at, how do we, because some of this is, is DC-based too. Children are required by law to receive certain credits to graduate. If we cannot offer that with a person, we are then looking at programs and, and other things that cost additional funds. So it, what, what are the gains? And so for me, I'm not going there saying, sir, don't take this from me. I am presenting the scenario that I am faced with. So everyone can have the preliminary numbers and they can know the fact that this is what it's going to look like. So yes, you said you are not doing this. This is what it looks like and this is what it's going to cost the region. And all four towns need to hold one head and say, we agree that we are not going to find a way to fix this. We, we agree that this is where we're going from and we are dismantling our high school and middle school, our educational programming.
Two quick comments and then a question. So on this particular slide, we should think about what the other two towns are going to do. I know that because of the order in which town meetings were held, there were different outcomes, six percent versus four plus one time two. I don't think the towns would love it if we leave them at different percentages and take it from there.
Okay.
My assumption is that if we go back to four percent, we should do that for all towns out of fairness, just because they.
Okay. We'll, we'll rework the numbers.
They, they probably, and I just want to say that not all towns are necessarily in agreement that we have to cut everything, right? We should be careful not to offend.
Right. Correct. That's true.
Quick comment about slide twenty.
What's the title?
Our children deserve the best on your last slide. When you started the presentation, you said, I don't have it exactly, but a basic, we're running a basic. When you started the presentation, you said, I don't have it exactly, but a basic, we're running a basic education system as, that guides our students to success or something like that. That's what we're doing, we're not doing the best here, right? This is not the best, no offense to anybody here, everybody's putting in their best effort.
Right.
But this is not the, the platinum.
Packaging, no.
Packaging school.
Correct.
So I just wanna make sure that this is not misinterpreted as our children deserve platinum and that's why it's so expensive. We're providing what you said, right? A basic education system that is bare bones already and is trying to meet state guidelines and is doing that, so.
I'll adjust it.
So my question, uh, slide sixteen, the butcher, budget projection. And it's about the spending, sorry, the blue, the blue.
This one?
No.
What's the title?
What would be the future of the region? Thank you. So projected spending, that assumes that we have, this is your needs basically, right?
Yes.
Why is the increase for FY twenty-six? Six point five five percent over FY twenty-five, which you can't see here, but if you type in the numbers from previous slide. And then it goes down by two point eight nine percent to FY twenty-seven. And then it increases roughly at two percent for the following years.
So one of the things that the team was taking into account was cost of living, the COLA, and, and the percentage that goes up, that we have to negotiate when negotiations come in and how that adjusts every year with salaries. So that, cause I did have, we did have those discussions around how the salary and in kinda shifts and change.
But, sorry, just a quick follow-up. Why would it ever go down? I mean, we know that co, cost of living has always gone disproportionate. Between FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven, it goes from thirty-eight million, one hundred thousand.
But remember the deficit is two point six, so if we have to deduct that and then turn. Yes, right, correct.
Sure, so I was just thinking that, um, again, just back to the base, like. As a school committee, we're, we're gonna have to buy, pass a budget again. And our, um, responsibility is to pass a budget for the education of the students, right? So we went to the towns and we told them last year that six percent was required for that purpose. And some of those towns heard us and respected that. And then other towns said, okay, this is a one-time gift and we're gonna pull it back next year. So the reason that I mention it is because this is not like an anomaly, this isn't something we're doing wrong at the district. And I think there's a perspective of that, but we see ten percent in East Hampton, they didn't add a single teacher, a single program, anything. And that's what it took to keep running. Six point seven in Springfield, and Springfield at least has SOA money, right? And, um. Our teachers aren't paid any better than neighboring towns, I actually, most of our neighboring towns pay a bit more. And then there's that one other piece, I think where, um. I, I forgot what, what the one other piece was, but, um, but like, the, the. Perspective, our students are in the fiftieth percent, we're flat in the middle in our performance indicators for, for the averages. And that doesn't count the issues we have with equity and students who aren't there. So the reason that I bring all this up is just because we're in a situation where we have to come into the meeting and be clear. Like, we know what is needed and we're presenting this to you. And are you going to be able to support that or are we gonna end up in a situation thirty-five percent is the same amount that the district, if teaching staff, thirty-five percent is the same amount.
Ten percent and thirty-five positions.
Okay, right, all right, thirty-five positions, okay. Yeah, so we've cut over the last twenty years, we've already cut thirty-five percent of teaching staff. And then we're gonna just dig deeper, so. I don't know, I'm not really sure what to say, but I just think strategically, we have to talk back to what's in the letters. Because they're just some, some basis of fact and knowledge that don't line up with the realities of what we see in the school. So I just want us all to be prepared for that.
I, you know, uh, from my personal viewpoint. I really thought that and think that by the, um, the towns who wrote the letter. Asking us to go forward with a budget, not based upon the increase from what we, what our current budget is. But on what, what it was for twenty twenty-four. That, that really sounded to me like it was punitive. And not very helpful. I believe that my position is that let's start from the point of view that we will go forward. On the basis of what our base budget was last year, plus two and a half percent. We know that that's still gonna cost us a lot, all right? There, there are some costs there to that budget. But in terms of where I stand, that's where I wanna be. I don't want to get to a point where that's, it's about a million dollars plus over that number, I think. That we're talking about with this two point, um, six million dollar deficit. Starting at that point. I believe that a stronger argument can be made for that was a gift, yes, but that's our base. That is where we're starting from. And that is something we arguably are due. You, the towns can, uh, the towns who wrote the letters can argue differently. But at least don't take back and move forward that which you gave us. You're taking it, you're taking it back. You gave it to us and then you say, well, we gave you this gift, but, um, I'm sorry, it's done, we're done. Uh, but that's not something that I think I can live with. And I certainly would be arguing very strongly, uh, for that position. Now, now bear in mind that some of us here are, are going to a BCG meeting, is it Thursday? Thursday.
Yes.
Which is highly unusual. For that to occur, so I assume that's high on the list. Well, well, that is going to be a very early discussion at BCG. And that in terms of me, where I'm coming from is just what I just said. That's what I will be arguing for on Thursday. I will not want to back down from that. And that they need to understand that this is something that the school committee will stand back up. Not only that, not, not only that, I, I, this is so abhorrent to me. That I really want the community to know, front and center, what this means. These are our children, these are our kids, and they deserve an education equal to that which we can afford. We certainly can, can, can afford better than a two million plus deficit for, for our kids. And, 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 and I, that argument is not, just not gonna be made by me. But for other community groups who are out to support the schools, they will be making the same argument. And I certainly will be front and center, leading that with those groups out there, who I know can provide that kind of influence.
I have two suggestions, um, if, if this is, if this presentation is like what you're gonna be showing at four towns or similar to it. The first is on one of the, what does it cost to run the region slides, like slide three or whatever? When you've got that thirteen point eight million in expenses for this, for the district? I just wanna, and you told us what the buckets included in that thirteen point eight million are. But I just wanted to suggest that you list them with some dollar figures at some point.
Okay, so. This is them listed, but you want it with dollar figures?
I mean, yeah, some buckets and some dollar figures, just so that, because that's a really big number to be on that, on this page without having it broken out at all. Cause I feel like that's gonna be something that people are gonna ask for.
Okay.
My next suggestion is, like, cutting thirty-five positions would devastate the quality of education. I, I, I just, I'm not sure that people, both the community, well, the community maybe understands, but decision makers understand necessarily that cutting thirty-five positions means devastating the quality of the education. I don't, I, 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 so I know you don't know and can't say now what those cuts would be. But I think putting forth some hypotheticals, what would it really look like if we had to cut thirty-five positions?
Okay.
That, that's gonna be much more impactful, um, to, to everyone, I think.
Okay.
School finance has kept me up at night for months. It's become an obsession of mine.
I know.
I spend hours on DESI. So I have several points and I will keep them as brief as possible. One is, this is amazing and helpful. And because it's coming from us, you, it has the details of the expenses. The narrative cannot be about our expenses. It needs to be about our income as well. Yes, as our funds are gone, got it? But they are the funding authorities and they need to provide information to us about what they're drawing from. Because the one thing I got, if nothing else, from Tracy Novick's explanation, her, her presentation. Is that the number that the state uses to assess what we're expected to pay has nothing to do with guardrails. Guardrails, and it has nothing to do with two and a half percent, and it has nothing to do with four percent, and it's nothing to do with the fact that the town got an extra half a percent. Because their, uh, retirement payments weren't what they anticipated it would be. It has to do with municipal growth factor, which includes two and a half percent, which is the property tax. New growth, state aid to the municipality, which is not small, and prior year's local receipts. So for our respective towns, for fiscal year twenty-five, for Amherst, that's three point six seven percent. Leverett, five point three five percent. Pelham, two point eight one percent, and Schuetsberry, four point five three percent. And I have the numbers for the pre. I don't understand why the narrative is about two and a half percent. It makes no sense. And it, just because it's historic, doesn't mean it makes sense. It doesn't make sense now, and the further we get away from this, the worse the numbers look. So we just keep compounding the same.
So recently, we had a discussion with, um, our DESI representative, it was about our regional agreement. And our assessment method. And we are actually one of the only districts that every year just keep changing, just that one page. And it's like, for this year only and for that year only, this, and so we've began the conversation with them. Um, and they are reviewing our regional agreement. But there's actually a way that we can adjust our assessment method, but that's gonna take a four ti, the four towns have to come together and agree to that. So what I'm hearing is that we need to look at our assessment method, and we do. Um, but I think that that's a, for a deeper discussion, that's going to take longer than it would take us to get the FY twenty-six. Um, so we definitely would need to, to put that on a series of four-town conversations. Um, and I also think that we have our four percent guardrail. And I think that we need to start talking about, not the two point five, but actually, one of the scenarios that the team were working at is, what, what does the budget, like, what are our deficits at each one? And, you know, in, in one of the one-on-ones that I've had, the conversation was hit the four percent, like, really look at what it's gonna take to hit the four percent. So we're working those numbers as well for, for Saturday. Um, so that we can have, what would it take if all four towns just gave us the four percent?
And the last piece is personal, it's anecdotal, and I will say it till the cows come home. At every single four towns meeting and every single time, our municipalities tell us they can't afford to give our kids what we think our kids need. For some of us, the trauma of COVID is gone, right? We integrate it, we're adults, it's a fraction of our lives and we move on. And those are often tied, I, I don't know the personal narratives of our town representatives, maybe it was traumatic to them. There is not a parent, there is not an educator, there is not a principal that does not come up against the impact of learning loss, developmental loss, educational loss, mental health loss. For these small people, these minors, that we are responsible for in these walls, in these walls. I challenge you to find one parent, one teacher, or one educator who says, we're over it, it's gone. Press release from DESI today. Uh, challenges and others, particularly terms of overcoming the disrupt, disruption that some of the state's youngest learners experienced during the pandemic. That impacted some of their most critical foundation skills. It's not over and it's not gonna be over for years. So whatever trajectory they thought their money was on before twenty twenty, it's gonna be this way for years. And now is not the time to be reducing these services, and now I'm done.
Sarah?
And now, now back to, I don't know.
Mundane.
Yeah, more mundane, well, process. Um, I, I felt our budget process last winter and spring was very stressful. Because we did, and, and a huge amount of time, I'm sure, for the central office and the towns and all, you know, extra this and that, and worry and hearings and, you know, all kinds of meetings. And people working furiously, I'm sure. And I really hope that doesn't happen again. And I definitely don't want us to get to mid-June without a budget. And then, or with a failed budget, where the towns just say, we're not saying, you know, you, you're spending money unwisely, it is what it is, we just can't afford it, so sorry. We're not gonna give you what you're asking for. And that then we have to cut two and a half million or more. Okay, so, so unpleasant as I'm sure, it, well, as I know it would be, I think that planning has to happen anyway. And I, I mean, you're already saying, and someone has asked for, show what thirty-five positions, what that could mean, some scenarios. But, um, I. It, it, this budget process is a game of chicken. Like, they can tell us at four towns meetings what they're thinking, but until they actually have their town meetings or town council votes, we don't know what they're gonna say. But they don't take any votes until we've put a budget forward, so we have to go first. And with four towns having to act, it just is slow and cumbersome if we have to revise anything or we're told no. So yes, we're gonna advocate. But, and to get back to the letters, I think it's unfortunate that so much of the conversation is about kind of finger pointing about what you've done in the past or you didn't do. Because I think, um, for some of our legislators, look, it's like, you may have spent every dollar perfectly wisely, we just can't afford it. So it's not a criticism, I think that just many will say, we just can't afford to do this. We're not saying you're bad, we're not saying you're irresponsible, we can't do it. So we're gonna have to be ready, you know, to, to play the hand we're given.
So, um, I know there wasn't a, a question in there, but I do feel like I need to, to rebut around, um, a couple of things. The first thing is that we are going to, like, every time I speak to the team, they're saying, this is one of the earliest that they've, that, that we've had to start pushing the budget. And my thing is, from the day I walked in to this position, July one, everyone has consistently spoken to me about the budget. Finances are critical and very important. But I also know that I am going to plan for a two point six million dollar deficit. Um, I didn't plan for Leverett and Schuetsberry because I didn't receive a letter from. Um, I didn't plan for Leverett and Schutzeberry because I didn't receive a letter from Leverett and Schutzeberry. And so, but Tillman's advice is solid that we need to assume that all four towns. And so we'll present that for Saturday, so that two point six is gonna go up. Um, I also know that we can plan from that and we can create hypothetical positions. We can say what it is, everyone in this committee has your own favorite area where you think that we should and we should not. However, as a superintendent, I really have to look at the overarching educational programming and make the, the personnel cuts that will not be as impactful to what the region's intention is, is high school graduates, high school graduates. Who, 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 who are gonna go into this world and become, whether it's an entrepreneur, whether they wanna go to college, like, it's high school graduates. This is the next step. And so, I, I do agree that we'll make those hypotheticals. I do agree that I get pulled into meetings around the fact that we have bus route issues with Leverett and getting children to school on time. And we may have further issues with getting children to school on time because, in speaking to the budget team, it is, what are, what are our personnel versus our operational costs? And we, I wanted us to present these numbers very clearly, so you can see, maybe I don't cut positions because I'm not gonna cut people, but I'll cut the district operational costs, which then you know ties into additional deferred maintenance. And our buildings are old, our middle school, I had a middle school building conversation today. So we really need to, I, the, the idea is not, oh, woe is me, don't do this. The i- the idea is not, um, yeah, the towns may or may not afford to. The idea is, and, and I've committed to this from before, this is full transparency in, this is what this results in. This is the number, and these are the areas that we're gonna have to look at. So when everyone is asking, hey, when are we gonna bring common ancestors to the high school? We can't afford it. Like, the, this is the real conversation. And if we are talking about honesty and transparency and integrity, then we need to have the correct numbers to have that conversation. And that's the idea of, for me, in presenting the four towns meeting. This is the budget process, this is what it looks like. It's probably gonna go up to about three million dollars or so, when we take out the additional two percent from the other two. But Tillman said something, and I did say it at the beginning. Right now, what we run is a very basic, standard educational programming. And there's some great things I'll talk about in our superintendent update that's happening at the region. However, will they be sustainable? And they won't. Cause even if we don't cut positions this year, you saw that in the next three to four years, we will have a deficit every year. So at some point, all we are doing is delaying the inevitable for many.
So I agree with Jen, um, Jennifer, we should not go in there without an ask. And I think it's a mistake to acknowledge the four percent and giving back the two, and I think it's a mistake to acknowledge the two point five. In the sense that, I think your slide, what are our future projected deficits with the yellow star, three hundred fifty employees, ten percent cut, right? I think you should just show FY twenty-six, say, this is what you sent me in the letter, leave Leverett out of it, so we don't get in the. Basically, the answer is, this is not acceptable.
Okay.
Right? And I, I don't think we should project it out, because then they start going like, well, but it doesn't look so bad in FY twenty-nine, just deal with it, right? So I think we should just leave it there and say, okay, clearly this is not working. So what we're gonna start from is six percent, which is what you have agreed to. And this is our baseline, and that's what the rules say, right? Even though you wrote a letter, that doesn't mean much. No offense to Amherst. And we're gonna stick to the four percent. There are some people in, in the group of people we're gonna talk to that care about education, but not at a operational level, as in what does this mean for academics? They say it's important to fund our schools, but they love the assessment method. I know you said it had changed last year, and, and that was unfortunate because we needed to do it, but the previous years, it had stabilized. We had the same assessment for a couple of years, I think. That's what they believe, at least in Leverett. And the four percent is something that they're familiar with.
Okay.
Right? So what I would say is, you say, this is not acceptable, and then you say, what we can, you know, think about is starting with the six percent and then do the four percent guardrails. And at that point, I would bring in Deb's, um, percentages that you quoted, tell me, may I? Yeah, please.
Oh, the numbers?
Just the, the name of that.
Municipal growth factor.
Right, so we say, this is how big your towns grew, and three out of them are at, at or above four, close, right?
Uh, depends on the year.
Can you email me the, those numbers and that information?
And that's why we're asking for that.
Okay.
And then final comment is, even if you do that, that's still only a one point something percent increase. And you, at some point, you have to say, the level services budget is a six point five five percent increase. So even if you did that, we still would have to cut a significant portion of our budget. And we're not even sure that we can do that, but we wanted to just start the conversation at that point. If they then start figuring about two point five, you know, we can have that conversation. But I, I think we should put that in as a, and even that is not sufficient, right? We shouldn't say, if you give this to us, we're gonna be happy, but this is what the rules have been in the past. You take your previous year and you add four percent, end of story.
Okay.
William?
I was just gonna say that, building on what he was saying, it would be nice to know, what would it look like to keep it whole? What would that percentage be that each town would need to, to give? Well, I mean, if you, if you built from the six percent, right, if we built, if we started on the six percent, how much over that four percent would you have to go to keep it whole? I don't know.
We would have to do another four, eight?
Eight, eight percent, okay. Right, okay.
I have Anna and then Erv.
So I will reiterate the sentiment that there's a feeling from apparently at least two ti- small towns that the assessment method has finally stabilized and that, um, there have been fewer, like, it used to be a huge ordeal every year renegotiating the allocation method. Um, and for the last, except for the last year, the, the allocation method has been the same. I don't know if the numbers changed a little bit, because there was like, and every year we will do this to even something out. But there was a, a described allocation method that all the towns agreed on, and there was no renegotiation of that allocation method for at least a few years. I don't know how many. And so, even the idea of renegotiating the allocation method is going to raise huge.
I didn't bring it up, Deb did.
Everybody is gonna be like, ah! So, if, if, if it's really something that we need to do, um, we need to be extremely prepared because it is not gonna make anybody happy. That being said, Schutzeberry is already unhappy with the idea that we blew up the allocation method by inflating the guardrails to six percent last time. So basically, what we have done is not really allocated the, the increase in budget according to all of the towns' contribution allocation method. We have instead just increased the contribution of every single town by six percent over last year's allocation. But the allo- but the, the contributions from each town has actually shifted in the last year and two, right? And so, while some towns, now their allocation would increase by a couple percentage por- proportionally from the other towns, other towns have shifted downward. And Schutzeberry is, I think, on the res- you know, on the short end of the stick on this one, and it's making them very unhappy because they have a smaller portion of the kids and the, uh, a harder base, like a lower income base to draw from. And by not adjusting that allocation on this year's contribution, they are way overpaying proportionally to the other towns, and it's very frustrating to them. So, by just increasing four percent over last year of our contribution, we are just continuing to, to push the allocation further and further from the intended allocation proportions. And so at some point, somebody is going to have to pay over four percent, or somebody is going to get to pay under four percent, because otherwise the balance is just gonna continue to be spread out further, and the towns are gonna start making more noises and objecting. I'm not saying that, that's my position, I'm just saying that that's what you're gonna hear from the towns. So, um, I also think that we should not go to four-town meetings saying, please don't take that money back. I think we should go to town meetings saying, we can't, we cannot use a, we cannot, we can't do that. This is our budget, and this is what we need, and this is why. And just the, the conversation about, you can't do that, it's not really that. It's really like, this is what we need, and this is why we need it. And if we had this much money, this is what we would have to do, and if we had this much money, this is what we could do. But I, I don't think it's like, please give us our money. It's more like, this is what will happen if you take our money away.
Who, who are the members of the BCG from the region here? Tillman or who else?
Tillman.
Just Tillman.
Just Tillman? And the rest of us are Amherst?
The two of you, yeah.
Two of us are Amherst, myself and.
And then I go as a superintendent.
So, on Thursday, we're gonna hear all of this. We're gonna hear from the town what their position is. Going forward, well, I'm sure of that. I mean, otherwise, you know, this is unprecedented to have this BCG me- meeting so early. Unprecedented. So I am assuming that we're going to hear this on Thursday, the rationale, et cetera, for hearing it. You know, in, in the past, what happened last year, uh, before the gift, uh, was certain members were, government members were saying that our staff was overpaid. We were spending too much money on, on, on staff, et cetera, and we needed to get our financial house in order. One of the things that I've lived long enough to, to know and understand is that whenever you have budget cuts of the nature or the magnitude that have, has been projected here, the families who can leave will leave, all right? Those who cannot leave will stay here. Those who stay here will be, uh, get a lower quality of education than those who leave, all right? That's, and that dance has been done before. And what that means is that those kids who are on a lower soc- soc- socioeconomic scale ladder will, will, will get the, the short end of the stick. And those kids who are minority, or, or bilingual, et cetera, they will be here. Our school system, this, you know, it, it, what it does, it goes down to the lowest karma denominator. And this has happened over and over again, all across this country, in every neighborhood, town, et cetera, that I can think of. And you can go back and look at history and see that those lower performing school districts, their budgets were ones that were cut to such an extent that the population that they now entertain and now are educating are drastically different from where it was before. And that is drastically on the lower end of economic scale in terms of the students who are there. That is not something that we in Amherst can tolerate and should not tolerate. I have no idea. I mean, I, I know that the towns are gonna argue really strongly that they, they can't afford to go with what, what is needed. And my argument would be, we cannot afford that, we cannot afford it. And, and, and to say, hey, look, we, we're, we're just want, we only, we're, we're, here's our deficit, and we can't live with it. That's one thing to say that, but I think we need to say what we can live, live with. All right? We can't live with this, what can we live with? That needs to be put out there just as well. You know, you, you just can't put out the positive without the negative, and without an answer to the negative.
Deb, did you have a final comment?
Yeah, um, I will continue to argue against continuing the historical patterns because they're historical patterns. I, I understand that assessment methods are stabilized in some perspective, but I also have found five different assessment methods for agreements and review committees for the region over the last twenty-plus or so years. So what that tells me is there's nothing that's gonna make everybody happy. And I think, wh- when you're looking at these kinds of numbers, you can't take anything off the table. An assessment method, as unhappy as it might make people, is one of the things that we need to look at. Because there is a statutory method, so if we don't all agree, the state's gonna decide it for us. So there is a default. The default isn't what we all agree on. The deci- the default is what the state says we have to do, which benefits Schutzeberry, actually, and Amherst. So, you know, there's, eh, eh, people need to compromise unless they want it just to be boilerplate.
We never wanted a statutory ma- method. In, in, far, in terms of my history here, we never wanted a statutory ma- uh, method because certain towns were punished, uh, 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 further than other towns, and some towns benefited. So we never wanted that.
It's not about.
All right, so, you, Tillman, you had your hand up?
We should also be ready to give an answer if somebody asks about cost of education in general, like, why is, why do we need that much money and are we efficient? I, I know that this will come up, right, but is this calibrated to, but, so for example, we're the, if you do cost per pupil, we're sixty-one out of three hundred ninety in the state. And so, you know, people may say, why is this so expensive, right? And I'm not sure what the answers are, but we should just have something ready to be able to say, not just, this is what it is, but is this the most efficient way to achieve what we want for our school?
Can I ask Tillman a clarifier?
Yes.
So, one of the things that I, I think I started off talking about was that we also need to take into consideration the re- the shifting of our, like, our scheduling and looking at, at what those different costs would cost us. And so remember, these are preliminary numbers based on what we're currently at. We also need to start, I do agree that we need to start looking at, if this is the most efficient way, and what would it cost to, to condense or shift? Um, and then we need to also ta- start talking about projecting out where the region could go. What are the future plans for the region, so that, the question that Deb has around revenues, how do we kinda create an education or competitive educational system that we are now generating pot- education? The primary focus of education is to educate children, it's also a business. And so what does it take to co- to, to run that business and make sure that we can start to reap the benefits of it? Um, so I do agree in the breakdown, cost per pupil currently, if it's an efficient way, I also think that we need to think about what it's going to cost us if we have to really make those cuts, so.
Excellent, okay. Thank you, Dr. Z, for presenting that. And everybody for the feedback, and we'll be ready for Saturday morning. Okay, uh, chairs update, I don't have one. Are there any school committee announcement or subcommittee updates?
Just real quick, I was gonna say the policy team met, uh, the, the new joint policy, um, meeting, uh, last night. And we finalized, uh, two policies, AC and ACE, so we'll hopefully be presenting those soon to the region. Um, and we're going to meet on the fourth Mondays every month from five to seven P M. Um, and we are starting to look at the personnel sections and the student sections of the policies.
Can you repeat the date?
The fourth Mondays of every month, five to seven P M. The, the locations will be flexible and T V.
Okay, any further? Excellent. Oh, did you have?
Yeah, the fiscal sustainability subcommittee met last week and are continuing our discussions. We will, you will probably set, be sending a request to NIBI about, um, info- data that we're looking for from the central office. And we will be meeting on the third Monday of each month, uh, six to eight, location T V.
And we will be meeting on the third Monday of each month, uh, six to eight, location TBD.
Great, okay. Uh, Superintendent's update. Oh, you're back.
Get to talk. Hi, everyone. Um, make sure this is on, it is. Alright, so, this is, has become one of my favorite talking points, and it is the Superintendent's update where we get to talk about all the great things that are happening within the districts. Um, and of course, I always wanna remind everyone of the district priorities, student safety and wellbeing, healing and stabilization of the district, and data and accountability for equity. Just keeping the, the narrative moving forward. Um, this evening, we're gonna talk about what's happening with Hispanic Heritage Month, um, hit some district highlights, and then I wanted to give an entry plan update over the next, um, few committee meetings, um, so that we can know where it is before I do my final findings and next steps. And of course, as always, we are ARPS, we are accountable, respectful, professional, and student-centered. So first of all, I wanna say congratulations to Livia Velez, um, beloved member of the Wildwood community, known for her big heart and unwavering dedication to her students. Um, twenty-two years of experience in the school district, Livia has made an impact on countless children and their communities. And so she is known for incorporating the Spanish language and the Puerto Rican culture into her teaching and fostering a rich and multicultural environment within Wildwood. Um, as everyone knows, for Hispanic Heritage Month, we reached out to the ARPS family and asked them to recommend different educators who have been making, Latinx educators who've been making an impact, and we've been highlighting them every other day. Uh, we also wanna congratulate Alvaro Borrell, Alvi, uh, who has been a dedicated member of the Amherst Parliament Regional School District for seventeen years, um, with fifteen of those years spent as a special education teacher. Um, his commitment to students and his collaboration approach make him an invaluable part of the school community. So Alvi is inspired by the moments when students begin to believe in themselves. He said, "Hearing a student ask, Mister Borrell, is this good enough, is why I became a teacher," he explains. So these are for today, our, um, Hispanic educators who we are highlighting, and we will continue to highlight them until October fifteenth, the last day of Hispanic Heritage Month. I'd like to thank, um, the committee members who attended our data chats. And so, um, last week, we had data chats with the different schools. Um, this is a picture of our, of us starting our summit at the region. And so at the region, we went through the high school, middle school, as well as Summit Academy. Um, it was an introduction to the school system, looking at school improvement initiatives. For me, was very eye-opening. Um, I'm gonna touch on some things in, in the, in the, um, preliminary findings. Um, principles presented on behavioral data, um, grading policy, and leadership goals and next steps. As always, um, Amherst Athlete of the Week is Elizabeth, I'm gonna kill the, Swiki. I practiced, I promise I did. Elizabeth, I'm so sorry. And this is our regional high school athlete of the week, Gold Cane's. And she's one of our top cross-country runners, very, very proud of her. Um, athletics is a big thing for me, um, I'm officially now a football fan, everyone, woo! Um, and so able to see the great sports happening at the region, got to sit through a JV girls volleyball, um, game, got to sit through a varsity girls volleyball game, but there are varsity records being hit. And so, as always, I am truly proud of what our students are doing at the region, and our athletes continue to move forward. Um, if you didn't know, please check out Arbiter, go out and support our students. Um, it's, it's really, really encouraging, and, um, just eh, to see their excitement and to hear the families and to cheer with them, and to know that I cannot have a noise maker, but I can make enough noise by myself. So we're good. We are highli- that's right. Um, thank you to Yasu Suzuki. Um, what you are listening to, committee members, is actually our steel pan ensemble at the high school. And this is why it's very critical for us to start to highlight the great programs that we have at the region, um, because we are competitive with anyone, we just need to have our programs nourished and grow. And these are, you know, Yasu sent out a blast saying, hey, our steel pan ensemble needs, um, someone to come in, and we need an audience, and I was like, I'll be there. And so, me and the team, we went out, and it's really great to hear that. And especially coming from the Caribbean, for me, to hear those steel pans. And, um, that was the students playing Imagine, they also played Oye Como Va, woo! And so it was really wonderful, um, and I told them anytime that I, I can, I will run away from a meeting and definitely be in the regional middle school to be there, the high school. Um, I wanna take a minute, and this is a TikTok video, and it's an analogy around what healing looks like. And I need to take a, a moment and just look at what's happening to this wine glass. Now, innately, as you're seeing that the water comes in and fills the cup, and it started off with a cup full of wine. But for healing to truly take place, we have to address the hurt, we have to address what's happening. And I felt that this video was critical, because every day, individuals are asking, what are we doing, how are things going? There are the projects that we have, there are the budget issues, there are a lot of things. But for us to truly heal, for us to truly address, and for us to truly have a strong educational system, it's gonna take work, it's gonna take us pouring into what may seem like a hard time, it's gonna take us peeling back the layers, and actually addressing and delving in for us to get to a place where we are functioning the way we should function as a normal school district. And I say that because I don't just want us to be a normal school district, we actually need to aim to be a model. And, but first, we need to address some of the things that we found. And that is where, for me, I wanted to share some of the preliminary findings. And so in information systems, there is a necessity to update our, um, integration of platforms. Um, a lot of our, our platforms don't speak to each other. And so really, um, it's also hindered by resources. Everyone knows our website is not the best, but when we only budget seven hundred and fifty dollars for our website, it really doesn't help us. Four, sorry, four hundred and fifty dollars for our website, it really doesn't help us to have the, the tool and share the information and make things mobile-friendly when we, we are not investing in what, in what we need to invest in. Um, food services, what I've found so far is that, um, thank you to Mister Gallo and to...
Kate Carey? Car- Car-
Mortimer, Carrie, thank you, Carrie Mortimer. They have an excellent data tracking, one of the best that I've seen when it comes to food systems. I walked in and was talking about, hey, are these menu items popular? And they were able to show the comparison month over month in terms of foods, how much are eaten. Apparently breakfast for lunch is a big thing in the school system. So, would also, we're working to provide opportunities for students to sample new items. In the business office, we have enhanced learning and training to tackle financial practices and improve processes. Like, we started our internal audit of where we're at, and we're looking at, as you see, we've started our budgeting process a lot earlier. Um, student services, which is also our special edu- where special education is housed. Um, we had a host of open OCR, um, civil rights cases, um, that are now being resolved. Um, thank you to Doreen Reed and her team. Um, a connection has been made very clearly, um, through the data chats as well, between our social promotion practices and the increase in demand for special education services, especially at the region. And so what we are looking at as we audit through, the audit has begun of student services, is that because we socially promote and move students forward, when we reach to the region, we reach to middle school, there is a jump in seventh and eighth grade in the number of IEPs and special education services. And so we need to start having the conversation of the correlation between both, and how that's affecting what students can't and won't, aren't able to do. Um, right now, we found that there's opportunities for the professional development and support to cultivate data-informed practices at the biz- at the school levels, at the building level. Um, and school leader evaluations will be reinstituted to provide feedback and information to our school leaders about their instructional leadership practices. Um, teaching and learning at our districts. Um, our district does not have a well-defined curriculum plan in place. And I say that because there is also improvement needed in our instructional practices, lesson planning, scheduling, grading policies, and data utilization. Um, we really need to focus on equitable teaching and learning practices so that our, you know, everyone knows where they belong and accommodations are being made. Um, human resources, we have MCAD cases that are incomplete and that are working to be resolved. Um, we are working to implement HR best practices to restore employee trust in the system. There were a lot of concerns around our hiring practices that, that came up and how things were done, and we're working to, to kinda show semblance of transparency, but also kinda correct some of the things that are in place. Um, and we are developing guidelines to promote standard operating procedures across the system, um, where every time, I learn, I learned this question, that every time you have a question, that means there's a gap. And so if, how do you answer tho- those questions? You kinda have to put some things organizationally and procedurally in place. Facilities and transportation, um, one thing I would say is that we have a dedicated and passionate leader in, in facilities and transportation. Uh, Rupert is definitely, um, one that I can call, I get clear answers. Um, there are opportunities to improve the workflow and communication in terms of how we address issues in a timely manner, what does that look like on both ends? Um, and then there are staffing needs and improvements to support the overall district efficiency and functionality. We're losing drivers, um, whether it's because we're not competitive enough, whatever it may be. Um, so we're really looking as we delve in. Family and community engagement, there is a clear misalignment of roles and responsibilities that should be housed at the school level. Um, chronic absenteeism, family and community engagement, what does that look like? It was eye-opening for me, um, in the data chat, when there was one specific data chat, and I won't say who, when, it was almost as if the individuals in the room, even though they had different roles in the room, when they looked at what was happening at the school through the family lens, that was an eye-opener for me, because that showed that there are things housed at the district that should be housed and dealt with at the school level when it comes to engaging families. And so one of the things that we're looking at is how do we expand the family center supports by reallocating the services from the district level more so directly to schools? Um, media and climate, there was an increased need for timely and direct communication with families. I felt like there was a disconnect between the district and, and, and what families knew. So you start to see, um, thank you Sarah Marshall for your comments to Seth about the video. Um, I, I, I thought, I thought it went well, but, you, you know, but eh, we, we just have to be mindful of the in- the intent, and so Seth is working, and he did a great job in, uh, five-minute ve- time. Um, when we didn't have all of the resources that we need to make sure we put it out. And we're working also with our family forum and making sure that we get that information out, we're engaging. You'll start to see that we're sending out information around how do parents access the parent portal. Cause right now, like, one of the things that the data team, we realized that only sixty percent or less, less than sixty percent of our parents are accessing the Power School Parent Portal. So we wanna make sure we start to engage and create ways to do that. Um, and share the district's narrative. Uh, we've been, I think, within the first hour of the video going last week, we had over three hundred hits. So it's really starting to engage and get information out critically. Um, our Mental Health and Behavioral Services Division is a new division that, that is created. Um, Maureen has taken this on like, her child, so she has her daughter, and she has this division. And so, um, you saw the new bullying platform, and so we're addressing things as they come forward. And in the central office, it's just really realignment of roles and responsibilities. There was a lot of overlap and mesh, where we had three, four people all dealing with the same thing. And so now it's time to pull it back. We had, um, responsibility sitting with someone. I don't understand whether Superintendent's, um, executive assistant would be the person putting in professional development into the, into the professional development platform. That's a teaching and learning responsibility. You know, like, so we started to kinda outline where things need to be housed and what they need to, to do. And so there is in process of development, development of an organizational chart, um, shifting services. Also, we need to look at shifting services back to the central office, because if we're looking at an alignment of curriculum needs and curriculum planning, that kinda starts when the district come out, we look at the overarching pic- picture. But a lot of those have been housed at the school level without really talking about where do we see ourselves as a district moving to, and what do we need to address? So I really wanted to take the time to share what are some of my preliminary findings, um, with the committee in terms of the entry, especially at the region, and what we've been seeing when it comes to students. Um, and as always, I wanna share this, the, the QR code. Um, this week Seth has sent out, and you'll notice that a lot of our pictures, even though we take pictures of what's happening with the students, we go from the back of their heads, or we cut, like, in the steel pan picture, we cut there, it had also no visibility. But, uh, we have released our, um, opt-out form for media, um, and that's been shared to parents. And so, opt-in, sorry, opt-in form for media, um, so that we can actually start to, you know, share what's happening with our students, our athletes, and everyone. And so that's the Superintendent's update for this week.
Thank you. Uh, Erp?
Uh, in terms of the, uh, uh, seeming increase in terms of the IEP for, uh, middle schools, what I've seen and heard and read about is that, uh, one, there is a, there is often a latent manifestation in terms of learning issues that come about and are identified in the middle school. Uh, second, there is the pandemic ef- effect, uh, that is also contributes to that. And also the different sets of expectations that, uh, uh, can contribute to that particular. Uh, 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 numbers increasing, cause the expectations are different than they were in the elementary school. All of a sudden, you have, uh, you have a curriculum that's different and different demands that are put on. Those demands that are being put on cannot be met by someone who's, uh, has a latent, uh, uh, learning, uh, difficulty, uh, learning problem issue, et cetera. I mean, and I just, I, I, I know that not only just from personal experience, uh, but from everything that I've read.
I think that wha- what we have to understand is that there's an uptick in referrals. Um, but also, when we create, so the basic premise of special education goes into can't do versus won't do. What is it innately that a, a student is just not able to do? But when we create a system where we are not truly supporting the gaps in learning, we actually widen that gap. And so there are individuals who are progressing well throughout their development, early developmental stages, and they may be identi- there may be identifiers that start to show that I have a numerical issue, or I'm not forming my letters correctly. But we continue to progress and push that child forward without providing interventions, addressing the skills gap or strategies. Then what we end up having when they reach to secondary level is now we've widened that gap so much that it becomes more severe than if we have put in those interventions earlier. So what I'm saying is that sometimes the latent effect is not even just a latent effect, it is a widen effect. Whereas if we had adequately addressed and put interventions in place early on, then we would have actually been able to reduce the number of students that may have had, um, certain academic deficiencies versus individuals who may not. And I think too, that we have to start thinking about, everyone needs accommodations, right? And what those accommodations look like. Um, you, an IEP should not be your first resolve, like, really honestly and truly to get, the, the referral process, you're supposed to talk about what are the basic interventions that you have done. Tier one should, uh, tier one is classroom, gen ed classroom. So I, I, I go deep into education speak. Um, but you, the, the, the gen ed teacher should be the first line of defense to determine, what are the interventions? How do we support, what needs to happen? What I'm saying is that one, for example, our grading policies. At the high school and the middle school, it was alarming to me when I saw some of the things that are in, in the handbook that now needs to be updated, and this is a great time to let the public know that the handbooks have not been approved. I just received them, and so I will be reviewing them, and then they will be submitted to the, um, committees for approval. And once the committee is approved, then the handbooks will be, will be sent, resent out to parents. And once the committee is approved, then the handbooks will be resent out to parents. But for next year, we will work on making sure that handbooks are presented and approved by the committees so they can go out over the summer, rather than now in October, receiving the handbooks, and so that's something. But there are certain things that are in, that were in place in lieu of policy that actually adds to what we are doing or not doing for our children.
One other thing, I was startled to hear this morning on radio, the state was reporting on its MCAS results for the entire state. Do we have any results for our region?
It was embarked, today's Tuesday, yes. So the results were embargoed, they came out today, and we have received, I believe, the official, we received our official access. What we're going to do, we fed some of that into our dashboard. And so once we have that, we'll be able to do a presentation.
I just had to mention, since you mentioned Power School, that I had the hardest time getting parent access to Power School three years ago when my kid was in 7th grade. It was, like, the instructions didn't match what I saw on the screen. I had to send a copy of my driver's license, and then I ended up just going to the office. And I've talked to other parents who just gave up because it was so difficult. So I don't know if that's still the case, but that might be one reason why you have a low percentage of parents accessing Power School.
So I know that would, I'm gonna again use education speak, FERPA, our Federal Reporting and Privacy Act. In terms of the family education, what can be shared? There is like verification of information, because Power School is our student information system. We met with our IS today, with Cody and Christie, and we're going to go over the video. There was a video that was created on how to access the parent portal. We're gonna work together to kinda put some things in place, and then Seth is gonna release it out. There will be some needs to kinda verify identities, but I also think that maybe open house is a good time. And I know, you know, we can definitely share that with principals as well, like, making sure you verify and give those parent codes at that time as well. Thank you for that.
Thank you for all that. Done a huge amount, you and your team have done a huge amount of work. And it's a little disturbing to see some of the things you've uncovered. On the other hand, I'm glad they've been uncovered and are being addressed. So that's, that's wonderful. I admit that I didn't know we socially promote students, and that disturbs me. And we already had a little discussion around that, but this is the region. So if that's a policy or a practice at the region, I would like us to discuss that and find out, like, what do we do? Is it, anyway, I would like to learn more about that at the regional.
So I wasn't able to attend William's first meeting last night. But I do have, and I know that a part of that is, I do have an email crafted to ask the joint committee to meet. I know that within the roles, in absence of policy, the superintendent can create procedures in place. But I wanted to kinda present a couple of things. Like I said, I came from a system where there was a promotion or retention policy that my former board had in place, and that we created the procedures that fell under it. So it may not need to be as deeply as grading, but I do think that we can work, and there are some suggested languages around what is it going to look like? And if that is something that is not what the school committee feels falls within their role, because they feel like once we have that discussion, it actually falls within my role, I am more than prepared to create a promotion-retention policy, just to be clear. I mean, there are a lot of things that we have to decide for me, and that's why I really wanna present the preliminary findings because what are we unearthing, what are we uncovering that would affect our educational system, and how do we fill those gaps? That final findings presentation, I really intend to, at least by November, December, to present that to the committees all at one time. And then what are some next steps? Whether there's a district, you know, our district improvement plan, what are the things that need to come into place? But yes, there are a lot of things that we need to fill the gaps on. But I was gonna send an email to William asking what's on the agenda and if those things could be placed.
Can I follow up with one quick thing? So if, if the committees, or none of the committees, decide to have a policy about promotion, and we put it on you to develop the, I would like you to come back and tell us what that is. I mean, I would wanna know what it is. What your process, what you, what you establish is the promotion-retention procedure for the districts.
Okay, but can I have an expansion on clarity? Because if it's in my hands, is it coming back for approval or just presentation?
No, no, if we've said it's, you take care of it. I just, it's super important. I think I would just want to know what you're doing, not approve it.
Okay, I need a
Although we could then change our minds and have a policy, I guess, but.
Just a couple of things. And your presentation's great, thank you. Could we add bullying data for the middle school, high school in these monthly? Not every week, but add that data to these? And then just a quick question, where are we at on welcoming schools? Or if you wanna talk about that at a future time, you can.
Yeah, I would want to get a correct update and not miss, and not misspeak. So I would add that for the next
For future data, thank you.
All right.
Point of order.
Yes.
We have vastly exceeded the two and a half hours.
That's it.
That's it.
I agree with you.
We
Tillman, Tillman's minute.
I mean, if we could just approve the gifts, that would be great, and then they can move forward. And other than that, we can
Well, maybe people wanna continue, which is just
Anna?
I move to extend the meeting by 15 minutes. Oh, sorry, by 30 minutes.
Second.
We have to.
Right, but we don't have to use 30.
All in favor of extending the meeting for 30 minutes? One, two, three, four, five, six. Six, five, six, and all those opposed? Three, all right, so we have 30 minutes. I'm done. Okay. Superintendent's update is done. We have minutes from 4:9. Sarah?
Yeah, last time, at our last meeting, I, we had these to review, and I said they were very incomplete and therefore offered to complete them. So if you have any comments, I see some formatting changes I need to make.
Page two, line three, can we change rating to raising?
Sorry. Repair, sorry?
The boosters, we thank the boosters for their work in
Oh!
Not rating the funds, but raising the funds.
Thank you very much.
Any other updates?
Thank you for reading.
I had the same.
Okay.
I have two. If we can add the member towns, because that's been a thing that has come up before.
Oh, to the attendees?
Yep, and then under the piece about the Student Opportuny Act, the MMM is just mentioned as MMM. And I know it's the Morning Movement Mentoring Program, but if we can either call it MMM in parentheses at the top where it's presented, or
Well, it was, it was. I did also use MMM, but not kind of as the definition, so. But I'll, Sarah, I'll do that there. MMM. And you said another, another thing?
The member towns.
Okay.
Jennifer?
I move to approve the minutes of April 9th as revised.
Second.
Tillman, was that you?
Yes.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as revised? Excellent. They are approved.
I only have three warrants.
How fast can you read?
I, William Scher, authorized by my signature, in the amount of 848,201.55 cents, dated 9/18/2024, that was for payroll. On 9/18/2024, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of 153,661.16 cents, general fund expenses of 153,648.09 cents, revolving fund expenses of $13.07. I, William Scher, on 9/19/2024, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of $231,005.06. It includes general fund expenses of 198,291.74 cents, revolving fund expenses of $29,518.01 penny, grant fund expenses of $2,457, gifts of $738.31. And then I have a quick question on these. We used to post these. Do we not have to post them? Is it just my reading them verbally suffices?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because I remember when I first sat here, like, some would be posted, and Irv was doing the reading, and some weren't, and and then it's just
They were posted in terms of the meeting?
I thought they were posted in terms of the meeting, in attachment.
I don't know, but I will find out.
Right, but we haven't done that, it kinda phased out. So I was just curious if I was doing protocol, that's all.
I will find out.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah?
I learned at the MS, MASC training back last winter that we are supposed to post them.
Okay.
But that may just be best practice, not a legal requirement, I don't know.
I will
I have them all starred, and I have all the emails.
Perfect, I will find out and circle back.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
I move that we accept the following gift from Sillan Garfield, ARHS alumna, to support two clarinets for the high school band program, estimated at $3,050 for a cash total of $3,050.
Second, and the thing is, I have $1,500 per clarinet. That was astonishing to me.
All those in favor of accepting this very generous gift? Excellent.
Thank you so much to our alumnus, Sillan Garfield.
Yes, thank you, that holy moly, thank you so much. All right, future agendas, planning. Irv?
MCAS reports.
Jennifer? I'd like to discuss the block schedule at the high school, how it's been working, input from staff, input from students, how it's been, yeah, what we think of it.
Sarah?
No hurry on these, but I saw two policies that, well, it caught my eye. One is that we're supposed to get a yearly report from the superintendent on class size guidelines, or I guess our, what our class sizes are, or what our guidelines are about, minimum or maximum. And I'd also be interested to hear a presentation at some point about the vocational or other non-college track programs that we offer. I know we've got some innovation pathway programs in the last few years, and love to hear more about those. And that's also relevant to policy IHAQ. Thank you.
I, what, I?
H A Q. I can send that to you.
Okay, Tillman?
I need clarity, and I just wanna be clear. So there was, and I noticed generated through Jennifer, there was a request for information, like, what goes out from the superintendent's office. It was a while back when I had sent something out, and it went to the parents, but it didn't go to the committee. And my response was perhaps we should put the committees on parent square. What we've been working on, and there was a request from a committee member to separate because I think that there are some individuals on the region who sit like on Amherst and other committees that didn't want to be on the regional, like, because they're so mixed, I'm just being clear that it's okay to add the regional individuals, everyone who sits on this committee this evening, to parent square for the region, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Tillman?
Can we have a four towns meeting post-mortem?
Yep. Anything else?
It's Halloween.
Maybe it's a party. Budget book FY25, the two, the two budget books that came out, one at the end of June-ish, and one at the end, one when the state, well, one when the towns passed their assessments, and one when the state passed its. I don't need the individual lines, but the overall summary, it's gotta be somewhere.
All righty. Jennifer?
I move we adjourn.
I second.
That was William, right? All those in favor of adjourning? Yes, we are adjourned.